Okay, I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board hearing of May 17. I'd right now like to do a call to order of planning board members. Sure, Quam, Mr. Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Delicio. Heard Ms. Foley.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Only.
Here.
Ms. Tenny.
Here.
Ms. Delicio. Can you unmute?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Great. Thank you, we have a full Quam tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, this be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded and thank you all for joining us on Zoom tonight. A little background, the planning board has voted to recommend certain modifications to the town zoning bylaws. We are here today to present specifically what bylaws we are proposing. Open the public hearing for public comment. And close the public comment session then discuss and take a vote. Our process guidelines are, we will have Vice Chair Sarah Creighton and Planning Board Member Chris Only present the background and specific bylaw changes and Vice Chair Sarah Creighton will moderate the public comment portion of the meeting. The planning board will present the proposed zoning bylaw changes. The planning board may respond to public questions and may ask zoning consultant to respond. The board may also choose to respond in writing and if it so chooses, we'll post it on the town's website. The role of the audience is to present your observations and opinions and or documentation to express your concerns. Once the planning board members finish with their presentation by section publicly invited to participate with questions, comments, or testimony. Public may submit questions via Zoom by using the raise hand feature. Just a guiding principles for all those attending. We ask that you respect for all participants whether or not you disagree. No negative personal innuendos or attacks will be tolerated. Please keep your remarks focused on specific topics and issues being discussed. Please refrain from repetitive repetition of questions asked or comments made previously. So everyone has the opportunity to present different point of views and or information. I would now like to begin the process of opening the public hearing on the proposed bylaw changes. This is rather lengthy, so bear with me. Public notice has been duly, the public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket. The modifications include to see if the town will amend the general bylaws to include sections regulating junk cars, curb cuts, and the allowance of commercial and landscaping material. The storage of boats in the setback and stormwater management. These regulations are moving from the zoning bylaws with minor modifications. Additionally, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws as follows. Delete section 8.5 junk cars. Delete 6.15 stormwater management special permit. Delete 6.2.7 curb cuts. Delete sections 1 through 4 and replace them with section 1, purpose and authority. Section 2 definitions. Section 3 districts and section 4 use regulations in their entirety. To provide greater clarity, to add definition, to insert table of uses, to allow swimming pools by right, provided they meet zoning criteria and to clarify specific allowed uses and accessory uses. Delete section 7 administration and delete section 7 blank and add a new section 12 administration. To clarify administrative requirements, add a section about review of Dover amendment cases. Add a section about reasonable accommodations and define the makeup on the role of the planning board. Delete section 6.1 nonconforming use and add a new section 7 nonconforming uses that revises and expands regulations to allow more flexibility in approving modifications or resources of properties that are not in compliance with zoning regulations. By allowing the zoning board of appeals greater discretion and allowing nonconforming uses that are less detrimental to the town and make this session, this section consistent with case law. Delete section 6 special provisions and replace it with a new section special 6 special provisions to renumber the section, remove redundant sections, create a comprehensive set of permit and site plan review standards, change special permit and site review regulations to performance based regulations where possible, make other minor modifications, delete site plan, special permit requirements in compliance with case law and change stormwater regulations to those reference, to reference those in the general bylaw. Almost all, delete section 9.2 residential conversion cluster and replace it with a new section 9.2 residential conservation cluster to remove the minimum lot size for residential conservation clusters. Could you please mute your mics, please?
Uh, which one? Oh Gmail, okay.
Thank you. Delete 9.2 residential conversion conservation cluster and plate it with a new section 9.2 reservation, residential conservation cluster to remove the minimum lot size for residential conservation clusters and specify density bonuses for the deeded affordability, open space, or town amenities. Amend the table of uses in section 4 and add senior housing by special permit in all districts. In section 9.3 senior housing to provide regulations that allow by special permit the development and use of alternative housing and nursing care for seniors and to create healthcare, housing, and other supportive services for senior population in all districts. In section 8.6 adult entertainment establishments to provide regulations of said establishments by special permit of the zoning board of appeals. Replace section 9.1 special housing provisions with section 9.1 accessory dwelling units in single resident districts. This section will reduce the area needed for this use, require that the use be attached to a primary residence, require registration of the units with the building inspector. Allow the building inspector to issue permits for this use when they comply with regulations. New units that do not meet the criteria will require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. The number of accessory dwelling units will be capped at 20 per year and existing units will be grandfathered. Lastly, delete accessory use number 7 as part of an existing garage, stable, or other existing structure, family living quarters for an employee of the owner occupant from the table of uses in section 4 and modify accession unit, accessory unit number 6 accessory dwelling unit in the table of uses in section 4 to Y slash ZBA in residential district A, B, C, E, and the general district. Thank you for bearing with me. I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
I moved.
Second.
My second.
Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Only.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. At this time, I would like to have Vice Chair Sarah Creighton give a presentation on specific details, after which she will moderate the public discussion period. Sarah.
Thank you, Ron, and I hope everybody enjoyed that little preview. That's what we're going to be getting into tonight. So without further ado, some of this Ron already talked about, but just start off by, you can see my screen, I presume? Yes, okay. The zoning bylaws, which is what we're talking about tonight, establish allowed uses and dimensional requirements within the town, within the parameters of state law and case law. One of the important provisions of our zoning is special permits that can change restriction or add restrictions when the, when in the public interest. Our zoning today has been modified many times, oftentimes in response to something we see in town and they're confusing and redundant. Some provisions are in conflict with state and case law. Or they are in conflict with or discourage recommendations of the master plan. So we've been working for over two years to remedy these issues. Most of the changes we're going to talk about tonight are, are most of the changes we propose are administrative. We'll do our best to highlight those that are not. The text of the proposed bylaws has been at town clerks and on our website. You can go, if you were, if you're looking for it, you can go to this link. It will appear on every slide or at the Manchester website. Scroll down a bit on the left to this image, proposed zoning changes and click on it. That will take you to this little zoning recodification section and you'll scroll down and you'll see each section of the zoning bylaws at the bottom of that section. When you click on one of the sections that we're talking about, that will bring you to a screen that looks like this and what you have below is the current bylaw. And you'll click this, a link to the proposed section 1 will give you what we're talking about tonight. So you'll have at your disposal on your computer either now or after the meeting, the current bylaw and the link to the proposed section. As Ron said, we have a lot to cover tonight, 13 topics, as he referenced in the public notice. We developed many of the recommendations with a land use attorney, Mark Robrowski, who's joining us right now and has to jump to another meeting, but then will be back. Many of the changes are administration, we're calling out those things that are more substantive and our purpose tonight is to get your input. You know, some of you will not be for the, and some of you will be for the proposals and we suggest that the strong pro and con arguments really are for town meeting. We're certainly happy to have you say them tonight. But what we want tonight is to hear your input about how we can make things better. Please keep your comments short and if you are recognized for a second comment, please make sure it's on a separate issue. And just so you know, the Zoom chat has been disabled, so it is not a way that you can give us comments. If you have emailed us as a board, we have received those emails and we always read them and consider them. Town meeting is June 11th at 1:00 PM at Memorial School. So we'll jump right in here, I'm going to take the first four sections and together because that's how they will appear on the warrant. Section 1 has defines the authority and purpose of the bylaws. The new language, simply revised language and provides some new procedures for approval of amendments. Pretty straightforward. The second section is a significantly expanded set of definitions. The new section 2 has 80 definitions, most of which were developed by the land used attorney that we worked with. There's some new definitions that are important for affordable housing, dwelling types, and senior housing. Many definitions moved from the body of the bylaw into this section and were deleted in the body of the bylaw. We define lot width much more simply and clearer, we hope. And all the definitions are now gathered in the same bylaw section. Throughout this, we've tried to not make the perfect be the enemy of the good and we do have language in section 2 that is clear that if a definition appears later in the body of the bylaw and there's a conflict, the definition in the body of the bylaw does prevail. The third section is the establishment of districts. We are not changing the districts. That said, the current district D has a lengthy narrative, which is very challenging to figure out what it's talking about. So to be clear, clearer, we have broken it into two districts, RD1 and RD2. But there is no change in any of the district's boundaries in, in section 3. The only addition is that we've clarified lot lines and lots in multiple districts. So if a lot is in multiple districts, what district rules prevail. And we've updated, updated the zoning map. If you have an old copy of the zoning bylaw, you'll know that the maps are illegible. And this will be on the town website if it's not already. It's a great map that you can zoom in on, but it did not change any district boundaries or the only thing it does do is call out RD1 and RD2, which is basically around the, pretty much around the heater. So the section 4 is the use regulations and it is currently a lengthy narrative and that's very frequently what you as a homeowner might go to, to find out what you can do on your lot. The current narrative is very lengthy and confusing. So we're proposing a new table which defines all of the land uses in each district. It is a best practice used by many towns and what we've done is take the narrative from the old bylaw and create notes for each allowed use. So the substance remains largely the same, but it's formatted a much easier to read format. We'll note that a version of the table, a few errors, has been on our website for comments for a number of months and I don't believe we've had any comments, but we have had it out there for the public to see as an unofficial document. We did make a few minor changes to land uses and including some accessory uses to try to make them make sense. And swimming pools, we propose to be allowed as a right if specific criteria are met. And though, so here's the sample of what the table of use looks like. It calls out districts and in the rows, the various uses. The table has a key, so yes means it's allowed, no means it's not allowed. ZBA means by special permit of a ZBA. PB means special permit of the planning board. And you can see some of the notes here highlighted here in this, this area. And then lastly, I'll just highlight what the swimming pool change is. It currently is governed by a swimming pool, applications are governed by a ZBA special permit. And our proposal is that the building inspector can issue the permit if they comply and a special permit would be needed by others. That compliance is that they conform with the lot and lot coverage specifications as well as the, that they're outside of the setbacks. And that they have a fence. So the big change is that a building inspector could issue a permit for those that are in compliance with zoning. The ZBA tells us they have a lot of applications to take up a lot of time and they almost always grant them if they are in compliance. So I'll turn it to Chris now for a little commentary on why any additions and additional thoughts and we'll open sections 1 through 4 up for public comment.
Thank you, Sarah. So the basic thing I want to convey to everybody is that zoning use regulations are not prescriptive. They don't tell you what you have to do. What they do tell you is what you're allowed to do. So for example, and I use this example last night with the select board. If, if the zoning allowed everyone in the downtown district to have a red house, that doesn't mean everybody's going to paint their houses red. People are going to continue to do what they do with their, the color of their houses. All we would be saying is that you're allowed to have a red house. And that goes for all of the uses that are allowed in the, in all of the districts. The other important distinction is uses that are by right versus those that are requiring a special permit. By right means essentially that you can go to the building inspector and get a permit from the building inspector if the proposal is allowed by right. If it's allowed by special permit, then either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals has to conduct a public hearing, receive public input and then issue a permit with specific criteria about it being in the public interest and not harming the neighborhood and meeting all kinds of specific design criteria that are established later in the zoning bylaw. So I think that's sort of the summary of where we are with this and I think it's time maybe to get some public input.
So we're just taking public input right now on sections 1 through 4. I see a hand from Sandy and you need to state your name and address.
Great, thank you, Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I'm having a hard time following exactly what has changed. I'm getting a summary here from what you're stating, but, and I've been to the website and it's in, in different pieces. So what exactly is changing? What was new in the use cases? What was changed in the use cases that may have changed to by right versus not by right? Where can I find that? I thought that was going to be presented today.
So two things, as, as the chairman read the notice, we are actually removing sections 1 through 4 and replacing it with the new. So in the simplest terms, we're replacing everything. Now, we have not made significant changes, but in the simplest terms, we have, we are replacing everything in those sections where we are proposing a replacement. The uses in each district, I think we have not changed any uses in any district. So correct me if I'm wrong, Chris.
No, that's correct. There are no changes, basic changes to any of the uses in any of the districts.
Right, so there's, there's no additional uses?
Not in sections 1 through 4. As we get into the later sections, you'll see where we will be making some changes to uses.
So the, yes, as, as Ron has, as Chris has said, we do have some proposed changes of use, but they are included, for example, with a proposal for senior housing, that is not currently in allowed use. And in the proposal for senior housing, we propose to amend the use table to allow that. But for sec, the current section, what you see, what we just presented is the same uses. Any other comments? Okay, I'm seeing none, so I'm going to continue. Oops, so again, if you're just joining us, you can find the text of what we're doing by going to this link at the bottom here, scrolling down to a box that looks like this and clicking on each section, you'll find a link to the proposed section as well as the current bylaw in the app below that, that new text. I just included that now because I know some people may be coming, have come in late. Section 5 is dimensional regulations that sets the rules for frontage setback, lot lines, height restrictions. There are no changes proposed at this time for that. So that's, section 6 is currently lengthy and redundant special provisions and we're proposing to rename it general regulations. It contains a few unrelated things such as parking signage, nonconforming use of site plan review. We're actually moving nonconforming uses to its own section, we'll talk about that in a minute. We've proposed to move several things to the general bylaws and we will talk about those at the end, but those are curb cuts and driveway entrances, junk cars, and updated stormwater management. So we will get to that, but we're, the removal of them from zoning is, needs to be taken separately from the addition to, of them in general bylaws. And we have that at the end of this presentation. Parking regulations are largely unchanged. Sign-in regulations, which are kind of in need of an update, are unchanged. We have consolidated performance based standards for special permit and sight line, sight plan review and switched from, in some cases, from performance based, from, excuse me, prescriptive standards to performance based standards and I'll explain that in a minute. The section on topographic changes and site clearing special permit review has a slightly new title and a revised purpose, but no new regulations. So the, the what is, what is subject to that and what needs to happen there has not been changed, is not proposed to be changed. So this is the important piece of section 6 is, what are performance based standards for a special permit or site plan review? And they are a design standard that provides guidance to the developers or to the board that is reviewing the permit. And it provides a more sustainable, resilient, creative design solutions. So prescriptive standards, which our bylaws are full of, provide exact minimum requirements, quantities, distances, heights, numbers of trees. And the risk is that designs or permits or site plans that have come for review go right up to meeting the minimum standard without any imaginative solutions and we're kind of at a loss to, to help people move beyond that. And they can have unintended consequences. In contrast, performance standards are considered a best practice and they focus on an outcome or an end result, avoiding unintended poor design that may, that may technically meet the prescriptive standard. But promote sustainable and resilience, sustainability and resilience principles. So example would be if you planted one tree for every parking, five parking slots in a parking lot. Rather than saying the landscape design shall be designed to manage stormwater and mitigate heat island effect, which might change where you put trees or the types of vegetation that is appropriate to meet that goal. Another example would be a requirement that a road be 20 feet wide. Instead of a performance based standard, which is the road must accommodate a fire truck. Because a 20 foot wide road at a curve might need to be 25 feet wide instead of 20 feet or at a long straightaway could be something less than 20 feet. I will stop there and ask Chris to add anything or I know Laura, you've thought a lot about this. If you want to add anything.
I'll let Laura go, being a gentleman.
You summed it up well, Sarah. I don't have any additions at this, at this moment.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Okay, I will, Chris, anything to add?
No, I, I think I, one important thing is that in the current bylaw, there are sets of design standards at almost every section and it makes it very difficult to figure out which standards apply to what kind of a permit you're getting. In this case, we're, we're trying to standardize them because we think that the design principles ought to be the same everywhere in town and for any kind of a permit. And that's why we're just putting them all together into a single, easy to understand set of guidelines.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop sharing for a minute. We can come back to the slides if we need them. Are there any comments on section 6? I know zoning is fascinating subject. Okay, well, we certainly can come back to comments, but we did think it was helpful to come, go section by section. This next one may be a little more exciting. Section 7 is currently section 6.1, so there will be an article to renumber it. So the current section 7 is moving to section 12, which is administration. We will get to that. About three quarters of the properties in Manchester do not fully comply with current zoning. That's a rough estimate. So easing the rules will allow changes to what's called nonconforming buildings, those that are on lot, situated on a lot that maybe is too close to a side line or a lot that is smaller than that minimum lot size allowed in the district. And that easing the rules will allow those buildings to make changes with less difficulty and expense and provides more flexibility approving modifications of grandfathered properties. And we believe that that is a benefit to the town and to the homeowners and the neighborhood. So any change currently to nonconforming structures requires a special permit or a variance and changes in use are not allowed. So a property in a residential district, if the use is not allowed, such as a gas station, that's an extreme example. A commercial district, a commercial use, if it weren't allowed in the district, it could not happen. Or more importantly, if it's a commercial use in the district, it could not stay, it could not transition to a residential use if it was a commercially zoned district. The proposal is to allow minor changes to nonconforming dwellings without The proposal is to allow minor changes to non-conforming dwellings without obtaining a special permit. This will give the ZBA more flexibility in issuing uh, and to give the ZBA more flexibility in issuing permits for changes in use. We'll talk about that in a second. The proposed section also allows the demolition, the reconstruction um, uh, demolition and abandonment of non-conforming uses. Um, and it brings the bylaw into compliance with case law and avoids the risk of lawsuits and appeals. So what do we mean by this? We tried to come up with some specific examples. So on the first, um, if you're changing a one or two-family dwelling that's on a conforming lot, that means it's the right size, your location of the dwelling on the lot is outside of the um, required setbacks from property lines. Um, currently, you would have the right to put a dormer on, for example. Um, and we propose that in the future because that, every, that is conforming. In the second um, third and fourth case, the one or two-family dwelling is either on a lot that is um, smaller than is a required district. Currently, that is um, requires a special permit, and we propose by right if it is within the setback, if it's, if it's out, if it meets the setback requirements, sorry. Um, on the third case, structures that do not conform to the setback requirements, that means that they are within the um, distance from the side or back um, lot lines. We were, we are um, proposing that they be allowed by right if the non-conformity, that means the distance from the setback is not made worse. So perhaps you're adding a dormer, not making your distance to the set, side set, side lot line worse. Or it's de minimis, you're adding a gutter or something like that. Otherwise, if you are extending further into that setback, you would be required to have a special permit as you do today. Um, and the same uh, case applies for a building that is, exceeds the height limit of thirty-five feet. Currently, you need a special permit. If you're not changing the height, um, you would be allowed to have it by right. Otherwise, you would need a special permit. And then the last case is um, a different kind of case. It is a change in use. Um, and I put seven point two because that's the section of the proposed um, bylaw. Currently, that's not allowed at all. And um, oh, I know we were gonna talk with Mark when Mark was here about this. Anyway, um, the proposed is that special permit would be um, might allow this if the new use is less detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, Chris, uh, I am uh, gonna turn that over to you, and I do know that we were gonna have Mark Bobrowski speak to this, and he, is he on still? I don't think so. So if people have specific questions, we may have to come back to this one, but Chris, say that on this. Nope, you're muted.
I think you covered it pretty well, Sarah. Uh, the, the table really tries to set out exactly what the options are for different non-conformities. And I'd be interested to hear what people have to say about this.
I'm gonna leave this table up, um, so I'll need some help finding peop- I think I can see people's hands, um, comments. Uh, Brian, state your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Miller. I live in ninety-two School Street, specifically with changes in use seven point two. What defines detrimental to the neighborhood? If you did, you cannot define it fully, then I don't think this should be in, in the process.
Okay, thank you. I think um, I, on that one, I would like to come back. I'll make a note for Mr. Bobrowski to help us to define that. I think there's some uh, latitude by the ZBA. Um, but uh, what's, when he returns, we'll be sure to ask him that detrimental. Um, Sue, can you make a note for that, please? Just so I don't forget?
Yeah, yes, I have. Thank you.
Um, Sandy.
Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Six Road. Um, regarding something that was stated earlier in this section, um, it was noted that minor um, changes would be allowed. Um, an earlier version, I think I recall, was stating on non-conforming buildings that it could be up to a fifty percent change in the building. Has that been dropped out of the current proposed bylaws? Is there something that states exactly how much those minor changes can be?
I can try to answer that. It, this would be a judgment call by the building inspector, and it would be, it would have to be de minimis. Uh, maybe a foot, six inches. Some towns actually call it out. Um, but you know, when you're down to less than a foot, it, it really is just a judgment call um, by the building inspector.
Okay, so that, that earlier version has been dropped, is that?
Okay, let's um, let me clarify the um, the la- the language on the website has, there have been, have not been changes. I don't know what earlier version you're talking about, so the language that's been a town clerk for two weeks and has not changed. But let me clarify, the proposal um, in front of us does allow um, basically a modification of the structure um, of not more than a hundred percent. Let me read it to you. Non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures may be extended, altered, or structurally changed upon the determination of the inspector of buildings. That such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the non-conforming nature of the said structure. And that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the gross floor area of the structure by more than a hundred percent. So that means that you're not increasing your hun- your floor area, and that you're not going further into your setback or further or, or greater height. Um, that um, but you might be modifying the floor plan, so, okay. No, I let's, I'm gonna take the next person.
I'm just trying to understand.
We're just, hold on.
Okay.
Um, I'll take the next person. Um, Mary, did you have a clarification to help us out here? Mrs. Mary Foley from the planning board.
Hi, thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I, I think you answered it. I think Sandy's question, and she can correct us if we're wrong, but I think she was asking that, that this is allowing to, a change of a hundred percent by right, so um, let's say you have a single um, single, you know, you have a ranch-style home that you could potentially add a second floor with equal the floor space.
Right.
By right, is that correct?
That is the proposal. That's a good example, yes. Thank you. Uh, Wendy Dixon.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, and maybe this is covered somewhere else, but if, if there's a non-conforming lot, for instance, our house is in a two-acre area, but we uh, are grandfathered in because it's one acre of property. If changes in a, a, a house that has one family in it, are houses um, by virtue of this um, non-conforming use section allowed to change a one-family house into a two or three or four-family house? Can that type of change be um, part of the, just by right? Yeah, you can do whatever you want on the inside of your house.
So Wendy, I'm in the same situation you are, and no, you cannot convert your one-family house to a two-family house. That's a change in use, so it would require uh, at the minimum, a variance or a special permit, I suppose.
Okay, so when we get to the use thing, then I'll ask more questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mary, you have another clarification?
Yeah, and we haven't gotten to it yet, but you could do that in this scenario that's being proposed with an accessory dwelling unit.
By right, thank you. Um, anybody else who hasn't made a comment yet?
Yes.
Okay, uh, go ahead. Whoever, who just said yes, please.
Yep. Hello, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is John J., eighteen C Street, and this may go into your use section, I'm not sure. We recently had an issue um, C Street to Butts Tappan Street. And at thirty-four Tappan, there was a proposal to convert uh, a lot that was eligible for single-family to create four apartment units on point, zero point four-three acres. Would that now be allowed under this situation?
Um, it would need a special permit, but the ZBA would have more jurisdiction to consider it. That doesn't mean it would be allowed. It, it would have to be determined to be less detrimental. The new use would have to be less detrimental to the neighborhood, so there's more jurisdiction. And this is the case where case law leaves us um, a little bit in a lurch, apparently, um, and is unclear.
That gets back to the original question that was asked earlier about who determines, quote, less detrimental.
Yep, okay.
Is the key to the issue because that entire Tappan Street could be turned into a whole row of apartment buildings uh, based on um, your, what you're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Um, we can certainly ask, um, we'll ask Mark Bobrowski for some guidance. I had intended to actually take this one later in the evening, so I apologize. Um, uh, Sandy, do you have a new comment? Um, I'd like to actually push, come back to this one if, um, unless there's a new comment.
I have a new question, yes.
Wait, can we um, uh, go ahead with your new question, I'm not.
Okay, again, it's sort of a clarification of the non-conformity. Um, so if there is a building that has been non-conforming for a particular reason, um, but say it has to do with how, how far it is from the edge of the property. But if you're allowing a hundred percent more to be built up, that would be allowed as long as it's within the thirty-five foot or whatever normal building height restriction is for the zoning. It's just, now you're allowing them, it, it's not changing the non-conformity because of the, the buffer or the edge that was non-conforming. It's not non-conforming because of the height, but then in a tight space, you're allowing it to go up. And that would be allowed by right.
That's a good example. Thank, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a lot of, I have a lot of concerns about that and think that it should be very clearly stated um, with examples for anyone to be able to vote on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I see your hand up, Sarah. Um, are you able to stay until Mark Bobrowski comes back? Because I suspect he, he'll be able to help us, help you with your.
I just wanted to clarify the change in use, to say that this applies to an existing non-conforming use changing to another non-conforming use. It doesn't apply to a single-family, an existing single-family use in a single-family zone. It doesn't allow it to go to a non-conforming. That, so it can't go to a two-family.
Right, thank you. Um, Gary Gilbert?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, um, the idea of expanding the size of a building, adding in addition to it, if the lot is defective, um, if any expansion of that building has to be within the setbacks. You, even though the existing building may sit in the setbacks, um, any addition to it would have, could not be in the setbacks, um, according to uh, the language of the non-conforming use we're proposing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gary, for clarifying that. Um, so if we have, um, we will have, come back to this, just to, um, particularly on the question of what is detrimental. I bet, I'm sorry, I took this, forgot that he wasn't gonna be here. Sue, if you can just let us know when he comes back, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, um, section eight, um, adult entertainment is allowed in Manchester, adult entertainment establishments in the limited commercial district by special permit. Well, uh, in the limited commercial district today, without any regulations. We um, can regulate them, but we cannot ban them by state law because of free speech. So without any regulations, the town is vulnerable to an unregulated adult entertainment establishment coming into the LCD. We currently don't have any regulations, and we developed a very simple new section by the land use attorney. The regulations require standards of operations, a special permit, and prohibited visible pictures and other merchandise from public view. Um, any questions or comments on this section? It seems, um, oops, we're not gonna take a break right then. Um, okay, um, section nine in the bylaw regulates a few um, different types of um, residential uses. The first is um, accessory dwelling units. Um, I think they're called something else in the current bylaw, but um, nonetheless, that's accessory dwelling units. The reason we want to change this is that ADUs, accessory dwelling units, offer lower-cost housing options, um, perhaps for seniors or singles, um, without a significant disruption to a neighborhood. They allow homeowners, um, potentially for a source of revenue or to provide housing for an elderly parent or a caregiver or, um, alike, and people who want to stay residing in town. The current um, accessory dwelling unit bylaw requires special permits by the zoning board of appeal for all circumstances. And only, it requires that they be in houses built before nineteen eighty-four, and that they have double the lot size required, except in um, zone E, um, where they can have a minimum lot size, which I believe is two acres, um, and that they have five parking spaces. Our proposed, um, and given that they are intended to be small, part four parking spaces is quite excessive. Um, the proposed bylaw would give the building inspector uh, the authority to grant accessory dwelling units by right if they meet certain conditions. The first is that they're within a single-family home, that they're limited to no more than nine hundred square feet, and require that they have at least one additional parking space. That the primary residence be owner-occupied, and that the ADU have a lease that is a minimum duration of six months. So they're not a bed and breakfast kind of thing. That the building inspector would provide the uh, the certificates of up to twenty new units per year, and then recertify them every five years. Um, there's no recertification process in the current bylaw. There is in section four, this is the use table that we spoke about earlier, um, an allowed use for an accessory dwelling unit if it is for an employee. And our proposal here is that we would eliminate that use in section four while we did this um, article, and allow accessory dwelling units by special permit, um, if the um, if the above conditions are not, do not apply. So to clarify that, this is a, a table, we tried to get everything on us, so bear with us here for a second. I think as we walk through it, you'll see. Okay, so the location, the white is current. This uh, column here is proposed with a permit for the building inspector, and the proposed bylaw with a special permit is on the far right. So the location is um, currently um, in houses prior to nineteen eighty-four. We would remove that provision in districts A, B, C, um, and E. So current District D breaks into RD one and RD two, so that is the same. Um, if they're an RD one or are, uh, that should say RD two, sorry. Um, if they, then they um, would require a special permit. So um, and all of these provisions would, the special permit would be required if they're in residential District one or two. But if they are not in there, in those two districts. But if they are not in there, in those two districts, they potentially could have a permit by right. Secondly, the um, lot size currently, um, you need two times the minimum lot size, except in D and E. Uh, our proposal is that they need to conform with the lot requirements in the district. And if they are non-conforming, they would be subject to the prior section we just talked about, non-conforming uses. Um, the lot size in the proposed could be waived by special permit. Third, the size. Currently, uh, the current bylaw says you cannot exceed thirty-five percent of the floor area of the residence, but doesn't have a maximum and requires four parking spaces. Um, the new proposals that new accessory dwelling units would have a maximum size of nine hundred square feet of additional space and be within the existing house and one additional parking space. Um, again, if if it was larger than that or outside of the existing house in a detached structure, it could be, um, be subject to special permit. The next one is detached structure, which is um, uh, currently it's not really called out, except that I believe the employee use is in a detached structure. Um, the by right would not allow it in a detached structure. And if you wanted to have your ADU in a detached structure, um, you would be subject to special permit. And the reason we did that was that we have heard many times, you know, the character of the town is important. Um, uh, keeping the home as the residence um, is in, we thought is consistent with that. We have also proposed that the ADU not um, create a new entrance, but that it use the existing main entrance or that its interests be subordinate to the main entrance. Um, then we get to this allowed for employees. Um, right now, it is allowed in section four and we would delete that requirement from section four. Um, right now, uh, it does require that the owner occupy the primary dwelling, but there's no oversight. This uh, permit would require an affidavit that says you live in the primary dwelling for six months minimum. Um, and that you may have occupied the house for at least a year before you apply. Same, um, if you were to do a special permit, these last few are the same. Um, for the by right and the um, special permit. The owner, um, the the resident of the ADU is required to have a lease for a minimum of six months. The building inspector is the um, issuing body. Um, and there could be up by, up to twenty per year. Um, Chris and I debated this today. I think the way we've got currently written is that that could be waived by special permit. But I think the board is probably open to including the twenty unit cap within that special per, you know, changing this to a twenty. I'm speaking for myself at least anyway. Um, the current bylaw does not provide any provision for grandfathering existing ADUs or monitoring them once they exist. This uh, proposed bylaw does um, give two years for existing ADUs to become certified by the building inspector and then be required to have, meet the requirements every five years. Chris or Gary, uh, let me uh, turn it over to you for additional comments.
I can jump in quickly. Um, I think the the bottom line here is, do we think ADUs are a good idea or not? And since most of them are really for an elderly parent who would like to move in, I think Sarah Melish could tell us stories of people trying to hire their mother so they're an employee and get a waiver so they can create an ADU. Or perhaps a daughter, or maybe it's a a single elderly person living in a house who can't afford the, to pay the the taxes and utilities. And if they could create an ADU, they could get someone else to move in and help pay some of those expenses. Um, I think that's the the justification for doing this. It is something that's been called out in the master plan as a, as a priority for the town to do. It's also in the housing production plan as a way of creating uh, alternative housing options for people in this town. Uh, we all know there's a huge shortage of of affordable with a small A housing. And um, this could be a way of uh, creating at least a practical way of allowing people to stay in the town who are now forced to move out. Um, and the final thing I'll say about this is that other cities and towns around the North Shore are doing this. They're generally seeing ten to fifteen units created annually. So I doubt we'll get that hu- that high, but we thought it was important to have a a cap so that people don't think that the town's going to be overrun with accessory dwelling units. I know, Gary, you have something, you there, can you add anything?
You covered an awful lot. Um, I think um, it's important to stress that most people by far are not going to want to have an expanding law apartment in their house. They they want to live in their single family home and they have a right to. Um, we want to encourage them within reason and with regulations. Um, and there, and most towns all around us are changing it and dropping the special permit requirement for them. Um, because they they very much deter, we know statistically that greatly deters these ever, ever occurring. And there's no reason to require a special permit. We have all the criteria that we've worked on now for, boy, my goodness, over two years, probably two and a half years that we've, we've, we probably have a more detailed and nuanced set of regulations here than I've seen in any town. Um, anywhere. So I think we've covered all of the issues and therefore this, there is no need for a special permit requirement. And I I think lastly, since the town has witnessed the forty B, I think a lot of us understand we have a need for more housing, we have a need for varied types of housing options and at various price ranges. I mean, these are basically going to be small apartments. And we could certainly use them, especially if it doesn't require building on on any more land. So, thanks.
Okay, um, I see a couple hands up. Kathy, um, Bolado. You're a mute.
Hi, Kathy Bolado, twenty-one Pine Street. So, um, you know, really good work here by the, by the team. I like the idea of the ADUs in the short term to help us with our housing diversity and our affordable housing challenge. I'd like the board to consider the long-term impact of the following scenario. So family number one has a twenty-five hundred square foot home and they add a nine hundred square foot ADU for a family member. Okay, we add diversity, housing stock, everything's good. But then, family number one sells the house to family number two. And family number two comes in and they don't want the ADU. They just want to turn that extra nine hundred square feet. Uh, you know, kind of, they want to unwind the ADU. And all of a sudden, instead of having a twenty-five hundred square foot house and a nine hundred square foot apartment, could this turn into a thirty-four hundred square foot home that is now less affordable than the original scenario? So I like the idea in the short term, but I'd like some discussion or thought on the longer-term impacts on our affordable housing inventory. Thank you.
Well, that's a very interesting point. Um, I guess, uh, uh, my guess is that uh, someone with a twenty-five hundred square foot house may not be willing to add a nine hundred square foot addition, but they tried to fit the accessory dwelling unit into the basement or into their, some of the rooms on the main floor. I don't know, it would really depend on the, on the situation. I think in, what you gave is sort of the extreme case, I guess.
It's just a way of illustrating the scenario I was trying to communicate. But that's all I was trying to do is that family number one does something really good. But then, could a family number two come in and unravel the goodness? Is there some other protection that needs to be in place?
Well, I would, I would say, I would say this, Kathy. Uh, I would say that family number two, if they came in and bought the twenty-five hundred square foot house, they could build a nine hundred square foot addition onto it and just because they can do that by right. So, um, you know, we can't, we can't stop people from doing what they want to do legally with their properties.
Understand. I think it's a good, I think it's a good thought, um, and it's hard to predict, um, the future on many of these things. Um, let me take Wendy Dixon.
Thanks. And again, I don't know if this is the place in the overall revisions that are happening. But just to uh, Gary Gilbert's point on housing, we need more housing. And I I love the fact that we have great, big, beautiful houses. But I wonder if, is there any place in this round of revisions that will allow for the interior of some of these big, beautiful houses to be made into, say, ten uh, apartments? The way the Frick estate in Pride's Crossing was allowed to be changed. And suddenly the town has more housing, um, it could be regulated. Um, but if enough of these big estates that are finding that, oh my gosh, this is like a white elephant, um, need to make a change like that, is there somewhere in all of this that that will be encouraged as a way to keep the outward invisible beauty of the town happening? But the interiors of the houses reworked to create housing?
Oh, another great question. Um, I I think when we get to the senior housing special permit, we might have an answer for you.
I guess I'm thinking of our kids, you know, that need apartments or not that they could afford anything in the Frick estate in Pride's Crossing, but.
So to answer your question, yeah, the only um, provision we have thought about so far is senior housing, which I do, and I personally envision a big estate potentially being divided into senior housing, which would be fifty-five plus or um, even uh, some sort of level of care. So, but a good thought, good question. We will, we do talk about senior housing a little bit. Um, Brian?
Yeah, hi, this is Brian Miller, ninety-two School Street. Two questions. Owner occupied, six months, does that mean they have to be there six months a year, every year? Or is that just six months when they first apply for the, for the accessory dwelling? And then they can move on and the, no longer becomes an accessory dwelling for them or anybody else? Number two, under detached structure, is it nine, is it still a maximum of nine hundred square feet? Or if they apply for a detached structure, can it be any sized unit? Thank you.
Okay, the first question is a good one. If somebody were not in their house for more than six months as an owner occupant, the accessory dwelling unit approval would go away. So you have to be there six months out of every year that you're renting out the ADU. As for the uh, size of a, of a accessory dwelling unit that's done by special permit, that's going to be up to the ZBA as to how big they think it should go. There's no, there's no limit now except thirty-five percent of floor area, which, you know, if you've got a four thousand square foot house, it could be quite a bit bigger than nine hundred square feet.
Okay, then I do believe that there should be some size limit, even if it's thirty-five percent. Once again, if it's a detached structure.
Well, that's interesting comment. I think we should consider it.
Okay. Just did I add a point here? Um, we, we were intentionally not encouraging these in detached structures. We want the town to um, experience having some ADUs in town legally um, for a while before we really addressed that issue. And I would assume the ZBA would not allow people to put them in detached structures, except for maybe the oddest situation where there's a dead-end road and there's no other houses nearby or something like that. Or, um, there, there could be some, there are some odd lots in town where it might be appropriate. But I think in general, the ZBA would not be allowing that.
Can I, I just, I think that the um, the detached structures are often current, those that I'm aware of that have ADUs, is kind of like an old carriage barn that gets converted, an existing structure sometimes. Um, uh, Mary, as a board member, you have a clarification or comment?
Yeah, my, my only clarification comment is the um, where it says for the current that it cannot exceed thirty-five percent of floor area of residence. It's actually more of a formula. It's thirty-five percent of the floor of the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit combined.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Sandy?
Great, thanks. Um, I have a couple comments and a question. Um, the question is, can a, a house have more than one accessory dwelling unit?
No.
Oh.
That's purposely written into the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, regarding the ability to do this by right, um, question. Um, I have a shared driveway with a house next to me. Um, if they are complying to the nine hundred square feet, they do not have to have any notification because they don't need any special permit. They will be adding a parking space. Um, as in a butter, I will not be notified because there's no special permit process. Um, so I'm just clarifying that that could happen under this bylaw.
You are right. If there is a by right compliant um, ADU and the building inspector determines that it is uh, complying with the requirements, there is not a requirement to notify the butter. You are correct.
Okay, given how tight many of our neighborhoods are, um, I am going to make a comment that I think that the by right, which most towns in Massachusetts, around our size, our kind of topography, um, have ADUs by special permit. So I don't understand if there's only going to be about twenty allowed per year, why we need to get rid of uh, the, the special permitting. It's not going to take up a lot of time. Um, and it will allow uh, neighbors the right to, to know what's happening. Um, second question is, are you now going to allow for a second curb cut to happen in these situations, thus getting rid of more parking space on streets? Uh, because uh, someone has to create a new parking space?
No, no second curb cut.
So that means they have to use the existing driveway? Or if it's on-street parking, they have to take up the on-street parking?
Well, they can't use on-street parking. Uh, they have to create an off-street parking space within their own property, uh, and complying with the driveway uh, requirements, which say only one curb cut. So they just, they just wouldn't, they'd have to get a special permit to do that.
Okay, so they might get a sec, a curb cut by special permit?
Uh, I guess it's possible, yes.
The other thing to your point, Sandy, is that if, um, in the many lots that are small within town, most of those, as we said earlier, do not comply with zoning and therefore would be forced into the third, the, the fourth column on my table here, which would be a special permit for an ADU. So if your neighbor's lot, for example, is um, smaller than is required for the district, then the ADU there would be by special permit.
So if, if, say, it's, it's, it's not in that RD one, RD two, but you're in another district. But, but your neighbor is on a non-complying lot, then they have to do special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
That, Chris, am I right about that?
Uh, I think certainly it would be true if they were expanding their property to do it. If we were within, if it's within their existing building, perhaps not.
Okay, that is a concern, that is a concern. Even if it's within the special, with the, in the building, if they're non-complying, that means you're in likely a tight type of space situation. And you should be considering special permits for any, any non-complying lots, adding an ADU.
Well, so Sandy, there's one thing I want to, to say here, which is, right now, by right, anybody in town can have a border in their house. By right, and there's no extra parking required or anything. You can just do it. You can have up to four of them. So, uh, this is not a big stretch from the existing by right um, regulations the town now has. Now, does everybody have four borders? No, I don't think. No, I don't think, hardly anyone does, but it isn't a loud thing.
Okay, um, thank you, Chris. Mary, do you have something?
Yeah, just a, a point of clarity. There is nothing in the current proposed bylaw that says that they could not get a second curb cut. So I don't know if you're proposing to add that, but it's not in existence. And the curb cuts, cuts is being proposed to go to the DPW. So I think there needs to be some clarity in there, um, surrounding that. And, um, I would just like to make one more comment that I also don't see in the ADU bylaw. You know, how, and with some of the other bylaws, how the building inspector is going to take on this added workload? And how some of these regulations are going to work. I think it would be good to have some clarity around that. Thank you.
I, uh, to, um, we're not really debating this as a board right now, but I did note. Mary, the, uh, suggestion also of a perhaps prohibiting a second curb cut in, as we review these. And did want to point out to folks that, that this process will, we will take your input and discuss it. And before we make final, um, articles, uh, for town meeting. So this is, uh, still a work in progress, so that we do appreciate the comments. Um. The other comment you had was about, alas, my train of thought. Oh, about the building inspector. Chris, you answered that last night.
Yeah, the building inspector has, uh, been involved in all these discussions and he's never said that it's going to increase his workload at all. But I don't think that the role of the zoning is not to, uh, worry about the building inspector's workload. That's for the town to decide.
Okay, um, I'm not seeing any other comments on this section. So I'm going to move on. Um, oh, Dave, uh.
Bryce Felder, yeah, sorry. I, I apologize. I was very late with my hand up. I just have a quick question. Uh, I'm at one eighteen Bridge Street. Uh, we have a fairly substantial lot, um, which would, which would accommodate an ADU of, of a reasonable size. Separate from the building. Just so that I understand this correctly, does, does this proposed amendment say that? Uh, if I were to do an ADU, say that's nine hundred square feet or less with two bedrooms or less, that that would still require a special permit?
If it were a separate building, yes.
Okay, so I, I read that the right way then. It's nine hundred square feet is by right, as long as it's within the existing home.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sarah Melish.
I'm sorry, I had, thought I had my hand up and I didn't. Um, I'm just concerned about what the wording is with regard to lease and rental. I think that what the ZBA is seeing is that most of these, um, are for family members and they're not charging lease, uh, rent. So I think it's important that the wording states that if it's leased, it's a minimum of six months. Rather than requiring it to be leased.
Okay, good thought. It, yeah, or leased for a dollar is also, you know, would be enough.
That's, that's crazy. That's cockamamie. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, that's what we have with the employees in the detached dwelling.
If leased, okay, good, good feedback. Thank you. Okay, um, Sandy, I think we've heard from you on this, um, twice, so I'm going to move on. We still have a lot to cover tonight. The second part of, um, section nine. That we're proposing changes to is the residential conservation cluster. Say that fast five times. Um, clustered housing, um, allows us. Um, it's been around for many, many years and as a best practice for preserving open space. Allowing smaller, um, lot sizes and often smaller homes, uh, with reduced setbacks. Examples in town are Surf Village or Elm Street or Twenty-One Pine Street. So the existing, uh, RCC, residential conservation cluster requires a special permit and is not easy to use. It requires at least five acres, um, but there are many examples of clustered housing outside of Manchester on smaller parcels. Um, the old, uh, bylaw really doesn't provide much benefit to the town. So we're proposing a special permit for clustered housing with no increased, um, density. Um, and increased, um, density, well, and then changing the minimum lot size from five acres. To that which would be allowed by a zoning or subdivision. So in the simplest term, if you are in a one acre lot, in a one, in a district requiring one acre per lot, per, um, dwelling. You would have to have three acres to do a three lot residential conservation cluster. We actually could have increased densities. My slide's a little deceiving there. I apologize, um, for, um. Well, we would require ten percent of the units be, um, affordable and you would round, um. Rounding, so, um, if you have under ten units, you would need to have one be affordable. And that is meeting the, uh, strict definition of affordability. You could get an additional, um, permission to build an additional unit if you have. Um. Additional affordability, additional open space, or provide additional town amenities such as build a soccer field or something. Um, up to twenty percent additional units. So in a simple, uh, math, if you have ten units, one of them would be required to be affordable. If you add affordability, you might get eleven units, or if you had additional affordability, plus an additional open space. To what is required, you might have up to twelve units. Um, so another table here. As I said, currently, minimum lot size is five acres. Our proposal is that, which is required in the district by zoning. Um, all residential districts, that means not the LCD, um, that is, it already in the use table. Um, this, um, would require special permit. Regardless, um, as I said, the required affordability is not changing from ten percent. It's current bylaw, but the open space requirement is decreasing to twenty percent minimum. And that's because we're now proposing it on smaller lots, um. But you could have a density and affordability, I mean, excuse me, open space is quite clearly defined. It's not just, uh, open lawn, it has to have community benefit or, uh, shared benefit by the residents. You can have up to twenty percent additional density for a combination of affordable units, open space or town benefit, as I said. Setbacks in both cases can be reduced by special permit. Uh, Chris.
So there are currently in the zoning, well, previously in our zoning, we've had up to four different. Um, provisions for, uh, residential development. One of them, uh, for example, is called, uh, planned residential development. It's allowed in the, had, was allowed in the C and the E districts. But it required a minimum of fifty acres and there are no such parcels in the C or E district that I know of. Except perhaps the Essex County Club, so.
We deleted that in November.
And we deleted it in November, but my point being that, um. In the past, we've made a very confusing, uh, set of different regulations for different kinds of. Um, residential development that essentially does the same thing. The idea is to cluster units together, uh, offer more open space. And, uh, provide more sort of a village flavor to, uh, residential development as opposed to a standard subdivision. Um, and by the way, there are quite a few cluster developments, not under this permit. But they, uh, that are on much smaller parcels than five acres. Twenty-One Pine Street is a really great example. Uh, there's one also on Brook Street, I believe. Across from the, where the Cricket Office used to be. And that's a wonderful little set of residential units on much smaller than five acres. So we can do it. Um, it's good for the town and, um, not really that different from our existing. Conservation cluster, except that we're letting it happen on smaller parcels than five acres.
Great, thanks, Christine. I see you have your hand up, but I wanted to just add the Brook Street example. Um, as an example to the prior question, I think that Kathy Vellada mentioned. Which is how do we create, um. How do we encourage the kinds of development that don't, um, spiral? From, you know, the owner one builds it and adds an addition, owner two adds another addition, owner three adds another addition. And residential conservation clusters tend to have their, the homes clustered together. Sometimes there's covenants, um, that restrict the size of the, um, homes. Um, and they tend to not be added on to over and over and over and, and, um, exponentially grow. Which is what you see often with, um, as, as homes turnover. Um, okay, Christina.
Well, I guess this was just coming to me as I looked at this chart. Um, so just with your example, Sarah, with ten units. And out of the ten, one would have to be affordable. So, and I guess my question is, I think we need to make sure that wording is clear, that we don't allow more. That puts us behind with our affordable numbers. And I think if they gave open space or a field and they got a density bonus, we could actually be behind on our affordable numbers. So whatever we approve here, I think that formula needs to be a wash at, at a minimum. Does that make sense?
Yep, I think that's true. Um, so up until zero, uh, one to ten units. One doesn't, isn't a residential conservation cluster, so two to ten units requires that one of them be affordable.
Right, but, and we don't, we're not, we're not describing what, when and why you would be reducing the setbacks. You could get an additional twenty units for open space, which then we're not, we're not requiring more affordable. Ten percent.
True.
That's my point. On top of the one, we're going to be behind a unit if we give away density bonuses.
Okay, good thought. Uh, Laura.
I think it's just worth clarifying that, um, we're still starting from a point where. You know, on a half acre, if you can get one house, then if you have an acre and a half, you still have three houses. So we're, we're, I think what we're, we want to remember is that this can be done by right, right now, adding housing units to the town. And so, um, we're incentivizing affordable units here. And I, I think it's important to do that as well as open space conservation. But we are going to get some important benefits in land preservation, um, and potentially smaller footprints, less impervious surface. If we do allow the residential conservation cluster, because you can still build three houses where you could build three houses in this model.
Good point, thank you. Uh, Sandy.
Um, great to see some effort there for affordable units. Um, have two, two things to say. One is, is there any specification as to that affordability? What percentage, um, of market rate or something like that? I know that came up while dealing with the forty B, so I'm not sure what that is. And we want to try to promote something that's more affordable, um, versus try to slide it in as less as possible. Which many developers will do. So that's just one comment. If it's not there, then to make sure it's in there. And second, um, when presenting the ADUs, uh, the first line, um, indicated that. These are, tend to be more affordable, but it, I didn't see anything written up in the ADUs about affordability. So if there's nothing written in ADUs about affordability, then you would need to strike that from any introduction or conversation about it. Um, in the article and, and anything like that. So, um, it would be good to get affordability put into the ADUs if possible as well. Uh, maybe some type of incentive, um, that would be great.
Okay, I think, that's a point, fair point. I think, um, we might change the language from affordable to less expensive.
Yeah, I, I, I think that it's up to whoever, whatever they're going to, um, charge for it. If, if, if that can't be regulated, um, so it, I think it's misleading to say something about less expensive or anything like that. Um, on the ADUs and it would be good to try to get something in there to help promote the affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Anne Harrison, did I see your hand up? Anne.
I'm Bill, um. I'm sure you're all, everyone on the planning board is perfectly aware that when you say capital A affordable, it means, um. Permanently, um, deed restriction. And I'm not sure that, that. Anyone would build an ADU if it meant putting in a deed restriction on their house. So, I, I think, maybe, maybe as you, as you explain this, um. Just, just be sure and be careful because not everyone is aware of all of the, um. Implications of saying that it is, uh, by, by the state standards is affordable.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work you've done.
I think that's a good suggestion, Anne. So in this residential conservation cluster, the required affordability is deed restriction. Restricted affordability to imperpetuity for income eligibility. Um, and, uh, accessory dwelling units we were talking about is to try to create, uh, housing that is in general. Um, less expensive, uh, and as Sandy said, yes, um, subject to the owners. Preferences on lease. You are correct. Um, any other questions or comments on residential conservation clusters? All right, um, seeing none. Um, nine point three, which I think, uh, Chris, I realized today should have to be nine point four, but nonetheless. Um. Or we'll have two nine point threes. Um, nonetheless, senior housing is a new proposed section. To allow special, uh, senior housing by special permit to provoke, promote housing opportunities. Um, for seniors as recommended by the master plan and in many conversations around the town. Um, allow the development of assisted living and long-term care, not car, um, for seniors and to create healthcare, housing and other services. Uh, we don't currently have a, um, senior housing bylaw and we're proposing, uh, quite a simple one right now. Proposed by our land use attorney. Um, the oversight is by special permit. Um, currently proposed in all districts. Um, I'm curious to hear people's thoughts about that. Um, minimum lot size would be as required in the district, uh, dimensional requirements as required. Um. So you could have, um, this Wendy Dixon's question about, could you take a large, um, home and, and carve it up? If it was for senior housing, the answer is by special permit. You could have, um. We limited the size of the units or the, um. Uh, spaces to two-bedroom units, um, being twelve hundred square feet, one bedroom being nine hundred max. Uh, square feet for a studio is six hundred and required that if somebody have a bathroom, a bedroom and a bathroom on the floor. That has the living room and kitchen, so that you, um, really are meeting needs of seniors, um, for, uh. Single, singles, uh, floor living. Um, we've proposed some exterior design, um. Proposals for best practices and age restricted as defined. Um, as senior housing is defined by state law. So that is fifty-five plus, and then there are certain types of, um, care. Uh, scenarios as well. Um, this is a fairly simple section as proposed. Um, and these are the highlights. Um, I'll take any comments. Uh, Chris, first of all, you must fill any, forgot.
Well, I could just tell a quick story. I got an email from, uh, a resident of Manchester. And, uh, attached to the email was a notice of the opening of a senior housing project in Gloucester. At the old YMCA, I guess announcing it was going to be done. And the question was whether something like this could be done in Manchester after all. And why aren't we doing it and what's our plan for doing it? And, uh, so I responded and said, well, this is our plan. We're going to try to allow senior housing by special permit by changing the zoning. Because currently in this town, you can't do it. Uh, I know there's a lot of people who talk about the need for assisted living and for senior housing, independent housing. Maybe a, a whole spectrum. and for senior housing, independent housing, maybe a whole spectrum of things. That's what this, that's what this special permit would allow.
Okay, comments?
May I be recognized? It's Lorraine.
Hold on, I'll be happy to come back to in a minute. Mary has her hand up and she's a board member.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in front. And I, I'm actually kind of have a question. I don't have the bylaw right in front of me. Oh, yes, I do. Are we require, requiring all ADU accessibility with these?
Good question.
I don't recall seeing that and.
I think we should check, I think that's a good question. I don't think we do. It's a good suggestion, I think. Okay. The telephone number 978-704, et cetera, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Lorraine Iovani, 20A Pine Street. Thank you. I want to support what Chris has just indicated. And that is that there is definitely a need within Manchester for, for senior housing, which has many, many different definitions. One of them is what Chris just mentioned. And, you know, that's great if we could find a building. But realistically speaking, trying to formulate other options makes a lot of sense. So I do want to underscore that senior housing should be a priority. Now, that includes also the ADUs. And as you know, I've written on that and explained a number of things there in terms of what I think would be the right process for that. But essentially, senior housing, very important. Now, I do want to also mention that you don't want to box yourself in here because a lot of senior housing, which is by deed, 55 plus, is actually three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. And I think that you're envisioning one level living like Brooksbury, which could be two bedrooms and three, three, or three bedrooms as well. So you don't want to box yourself in with the number of bedrooms. A lot of seniors are not immobile, but they do want to live in 55 plus because it's convenient and it's safe. So I'm a great proponent of number one, the senior situation and also affordable. And yes, we do have to think outside of the box. And I've had numerous exchanges with Chris on how to do that on the, you know, affordable end of it. But I just wanted to make these comments to underscore, this is a great thing that we need to do and add. And so I'm very supportive and I wanted you to know that. And I want to thank you all for the very hard work that you do. It's, it's good to listen to people and get additional ideas. And you never know where, you know, where that will lead. It could be a really good idea. So thank you very much. And that's all I want to add for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and support. And we do acknowledge your letter that you, or your email that you sent recent, I think today. The rationale for the size limitations on this was looking at Hamilton's experience with the senior housing where many, it appears that, that large parcels are being made into 55 plus sort of community with large footprints. And so I think that was our response was to at least start with something that's relatively small. Is, Chris, you're smiling, does that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
So any other comments? Great, okay. Special, section 10, which is special districts. Last night, if you're at the board's selectmen meeting, we were confused. These used to be in section four, so they're actually, we moved them in November to sections 10 and 11, when we reorganized everything. If you have an old bylaw, these, they do get a new one because everything has changed its place. But nonetheless, we have no changes. The last zoning section is a very exciting section called administration and procedures. It is currently section seven, it will move to 12. It is currently confusing. It happens to neglect the role of the planning board. So we have proposed the roles, the organizational framework of the building inspector, the zoning board of appeals and planning board, which basically Mark Bobrowski wrote most of this section. And we have aligned the procedures and criteria for reviewing special permits. You know, how many copies of things you need to provide and so forth. We've simplified those and removed them from section six, where they were stated about five different times and consolidated them all here. I have nothing else to say on that one. Chris, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to say either.
The one question that did come up when we were reviewing this is that throughout our bylaws, currently we refer to various timelines for special permit review and decisions. Those are actually all stipulated by state law. So rather than reiterating them in this section, we plan to kind of create an advisory notice on the website or something that gives people a clear set of when the various things are due and what the timelines are. But it doesn't need to be, put it forward in, in zoning is redundant. And if state law changes, then it means our zoning is out of date. So that was another change we made was to kind of take all that stuff out because it's, it's, state law dictates that. Do we have any comments on section 12? Sarah Melish.
Yeah, I, I think you indicated that you have included in this bylaw the number of copies required. And I'm wondering, is with technology changes, do you want to remove that from the bylaw and have that as procedures?
Yeah, I think we, I think we have, I think, I think we have done that.
Okay.
We don't need 11 copies anymore.
No.
Right, and hopefully eventually we'll be all electronic.
Right.
Someday.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. The last thing is, we alluded to this in the beginning, move several sections to the general bylaws. The benefit of having regulation in general bylaws is that it can be enforced over time rather than just applying when you get a building permit or to a new development. So we're not proposing any changes to the existing general bylaws. And we're just proposing to add three things to the general bylaws. The first is curb cuts. Currently, the planning board reviews curb cuts referred to as driveway entrances based on safety and drainage. But most towns have the DPW department, in our case, review them. And it seems to us that that makes sense. If a curb cut does not comply with the requirements, then it would come to the special, to the planning board for a special permit or a review. The second in issue is that junk cars are regulated in zoning, but not in the general bylaws. So we feel like junk cars are not really subject to permits. So move them to the general, but move that regulation part and parcel to the general bylaws. And stormwater management has brought a applicability. If somebody's doing some landscaping or maybe is putting in a driveway or preparing a site or just making minor modifications, zoning might not apply. But stormwater is extreme, stormwater management is extremely important for the town. And so we wanted to have it be in general bylaws where the requirements were more broadly applicable. Section six does refer to the stormwater management provisions in general bylaws. So in the new section six. And I guess I should also say that the public notice, and somehow this fell off of our list, did also propose a section to the general bylaws about what large equipment could be stored in the side yards. And we did not have a draft of that. We don't need to have it for the public hearing because it's general bylaws. But we will talk to the board's selectmen about that issue. It was not in zoning. So that's why it fell off my list. But it's not required that we have a public hearing for that. So I think we're safe on that. But just, there may be one additional provision in our proposal for general bylaw revisions. Any comments on this? I hope that, that people think this makes sense. Okay. So lastly, I just wanted to, without getting into the weeds here too much, to just let, thank you all for coming tonight. It's a fascinating topic, I hope you found it so, tongue in cheek there. But when you get to town meeting on June 11th, the order of the topics we talked about tonight will look a little different because they are interrelated. So we're working to make sure that the order makes sense and that the each article can, we hope, stand alone on a, on its own. And so they will be taken in a slightly different order than what we saw tonight. And this order might change, I've got a couple thoughts, but. Okay, I'm gonna, I think that's my, oh, old, okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. If I can figure out how to do that. And open it to any other comments that we have not heard. Is Mark, we have, we still have a few minutes. And I'm hoping that Mark Bobrowski can answer the question that was raised about what is detrimental, what, not detrimental. But what I would propose to the board is that we close the public hearing and continue to meet when Mark comes on and that we can post an answer to that question on our website. Because I do think that's a good question that deserves an answer. And Mark is the right one to answer that. So that would be my proposal. I see Gary has his hand up. Go ahead, Gary.
It's my understanding that that language is part of the state statute. That's where it comes from. And it's a little bit, I can understand someone saying, gee, shouldn't that be clarified? But that's actually the fate of the zoning board of appeals. They have to deal with some language when they grant variances in special permits that was intentionally written somewhat vaguely by the state. And you do have to interpret it as a board. And I think that's, that's how, that stood for decades.
Okay. So, Mary, go ahead.
Um, I think that question was in reference to things that we were saying by right as long as it was not more detrimental. So I'm still unclear who that deciding person for by right, or I'm sorry, who that person deciding it's less detrimental in tandem with by right? So it's no longer in the hands of the ZBA, so I'm not sure who's applying that.
I think it's a good question to talk with Mark about when he returns in 15 minutes. I agree. Go ahead, Ron. Do I, hope you're mute.
You, you just took the words out of my, that's what I was going to suggest.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it back to Ron. And I guess I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hang on, John Jay here.
Okay, go ahead, John Jay.
I have two questions for you. A lot of changes have been outlined here. And one question is, has any thinking been done about the potential ramifications to our infrastructure? You're looking to increase the, encourage development, I believe is the word that you were talking about. And has any, can you point to any studies that have been done about the potential impact on that, on the, on our infrastructure?
So we, Anne Harrison, are you still on there? The we have not, to answer your question directly, we have not done a study of what an impact would be. There are a couple of points here. Just because we allow something doesn't mean it would be built. So it's a question that's very hard to study even if we did. That said, the, I believe that the capacity within our wastewater treatment plant has been verified to have capacity. And I believe also our water systems. The this does not prejudge the, this, these zoning bylaws are silent about whether or not you can, you have the right to water or sewer in any of these additional, or any of these allowed uses. In the same way, if you were to build a house, you may or may not have allowed hookups to the, allow, to the services. So to answer your, your, your direct question, no, we have not done a study, but it's a hard question to answer. Chris?
I have, Sarah, can I take a shot at this also? So I think, Mr. Jay, the, the, the idea that we're encouraging development with these bylaws is a little off base. The one, I guess, 20 ADUs might be a marginal impact on the town's infrastructure. I think the one that might have the most effect would be the senior housing, which is a stated goal of most of the residents in the town. And, and then finally, I would say, as part of the special permitting process, these kinds of analysis are done, we, just as they were, for example, for the 40B project on Shingle Hill. So it's not the, it's not, this is not the time to be evaluating impact on town resources. It's when an applicant comes in with a special permit that that comes into play.
I would counter to say that I think foresight would be better, foreplanning is better now than after the fact. But
Well, currently, there is no planning. People can just build things all over the town by right. And we have no say in that. So what you're suggesting is some sort of marginal impact by what we're doing to control and manage the growth of this town.
One other question, which is unrelated. Many times there've been comments this evening, we don't have a draft. And that's good, we can fine tune that in the proposal. And this is going to be voted on, is this correct, at the town meeting?
Yes, it will.
And is there a minimum requirement for having this information in writing before a town meeting?
So the information is on the website. And there are hard copies available at the library and the town hall, as is required.
So what you're saying is in, is down in writing now, is that correct?
Yes.
But the draft, what I heard this evening, it's a good question. We'll find, we'll get a proposal when, by the town meeting, et cetera. It doesn't sound like that all we're thinking has been done before the town meeting. Why are we having a rush to the town meeting to have a vote on the town meeting?
Well, we've been working at this for two and a half years. So it's a little, I guess it's a little hurtful to us to hear you say that no thinking has gone into this.
Into the wording is what I'm talking about, not no thinking.
The wording has been, the wording has been.
I think what you're doing is an excellent job. They're all I'm asking is about the process.
So the process does allow for us to make changes within the scope of the public hearing notice, and I think all of the changes, at least on my list, are within that scope. The public notice is not required to be the final version because you want to be able to take public input and revise for the town meeting. So I think we are well within the allowed procedures. We will certainly make the final versions available to the public before the town meeting. We have been making them available on our website as well as a copy at the town clerk.
So would it be worthwhile for those of us who are watching this evening to write and make a comment, or is that after the fact?
No, we welcome comments.
We welcome comments. The warrant closes on May 24th. We are probably gonna talk about some of those articles tonight, perhaps, or tomorrow night, or May 23rd. So our last chance to change anything will be May 23rd. Laura, go ahead.
Thanks, Sarah. I wanted to respond to Mr. Jay's question about the impact on infrastructure. And then particularly in section six, where we looked at performance requirements and resiliency sustainability. We have added environmental protections that are specifically going to help us divert drainage, so stormwater from the stormwater system, which also, if you're talking about a combined sewer overflow, if the stormwater is being treated as wastewater, the goals of those sections are to keep water out of our drainage systems, out of the wastewater systems for stormwater that doesn't need to be treated and in fact reduce reliance on the gray infrastructure, the piping systems in the town. So that is a big goal for sustainability reasons, resiliency is to reduce that impact overall. So I think we're strengthening that.
I think also moving stormwater to the general bylaws makes it have more, have broader applicability, which also helps with that issue. Sandy.
Hi, thank you. I have a question. Is there a, an occupancy limit to the ADUs?
No.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's something both for safety and for our infrastructure that should be considered. That needs to be part of the ADUs. Someone could move in. It, it, it sounds like we're trying to promote using the existing square footage, so I don't know if we're gonna get any more taxes to support more kids in the schools and more use of the facilities, et cetera, and I don't know if there are limitations, because many towns call these apartments versus ADUs, they actually call them something like that. And maybe by calling them apartments, they might fall under some of the jurisdiction of occupancy that needs to happen within a certain square footage.
Thank you for that comment. Sue.
Hi, Sue Thompson at Harbor Street. I have a quick question and I should have brought it up when we were talking at section seven, but it was basically about 7.6, which is the abandonment or non-use, which is very similar to the original language in section, the old section six. And I think I understand what it means, basically, you know, a non-conforming use that was grandfathered and gets abandoned for two years. There's no, no, no longer, it loses its protected sta- status. So that all made sense, but then there's a new clause that wasn't in the original one back in section six that basically says by special permit, the ZBA may reestablish the non-conforming use. And my question is, why was that clause added? What was the rationale behind that?
I'm not sure we know. We, we, Mark Barowski proposed that sick, as a suggestion. I'm not sure we know why, why he recommends that. We can ask that as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Address that?
Yeah, sure, Gary.
I think because the non-conforming use could be benign. And it may have little impact on the town.
Let me read the language, just so everybody's clear. It says, we're talking about in the event of the proposed reconstruction, so that's in demolition and catastrophe involuntary. The structure to exceed, it would cause the structure to exceed the gross floor area of the original non-conforming structure or cause the structure to be located other than in the original footprint. A special permit from the Board of Appeals shall be required. Such special permit shall be obtained prior to demolition. So I think the idea is that if it was okay beforehand, then it would be okay in the, in the after, in the, in the second condition, as long as it was the same footprint. But if it, if it's something other, then it would need a special permit, which is basically what it would need anyway.
Sarah, I was actually talking about non-conforming use. For example, if you had a gas station that was around in 1945 and the bylaws came into place and two acre zone grew up around that little gas station. And suppose it was, so it's non-conforming, but it's allowed, it's grandfathered. And then all of a sudden, it was abandoned for whatever use, the use was abandoned, it didn't, wasn't a gas station. So, so the old law, the 6.1.4, basically said, you no longer are protected after those two years. But this now, this new clause added to the 7.6 says basically that could be reversed, reestablished to the non-conforming use. That gas station could still exist in that two acre, single family residential zone. So I'm wondering why, so grandfathered and we protected it. And, but then when it's no longer used, why are we permitting it to go back to non-conforming?
Let me ask you, are you saying that you would be in favor of deleting that provision, just as?
Please.
Okay, good. Thank you for, is it helpful to us to have it as a comment rather than as a question? Sue, do you have a?
Yeah, I just wanted to try to help clarify that. So it would, this language allows it to be reestablished, but only by special permit. So let's think about it in case if it was a beloved corner, general store or something that was allowed, but that was dear to the neighborhood, but still non-conforming. If it, the owner went out of business and for two years, but then someone came wanting to reopen it, would you want the ability to reallow that use? So it is completely in the hands of the special permit. It's, I mean, the special permit granting authority to ZBA, so it's not by right. But it does allow, allow for reestablishing that use, so.
Okay. Great. Since the public hearing is still open, I'm gonna ask Mark Barowski, who has returned. Mark is a land use attorney who has worked with us on these changes and we've actually, Mark, worked through almost of all of the sections. Maybe I'll reshare my we, but we got, of course, hung up on the non-conforming use and had a couple of questions. The first is how is a determination of de minimis or not, or non-conformity not made worse determined by a ZBA?
Two different questions. De minimis typically means that it is so small in scale that nobody's going to bother about it. For example, when you reshingle an unconforming house, depending upon the types of shingle that you use, you may actually make it more non-conforming because you've moved it inches closer or an inch closer to the side lot line. That's a de minimis thing. In terms of making the overall test for non-conformities, whether it's more detrimental than the existing use, you usually do it by doing a comp of what's there today versus what will be there tomorrow. So if it gets smaller, it's more likely to be better. If it doesn't get too much bigger, it could still be less detrimental, depending upon the facts of the, of the case.
So it's subjective to those and specific to the application?
Definitely.
Okay. The second question that we had was in 7.6, where is it customary to, this is around a non-conforming use, which has been abandoned for two years and be reestablished by a special permit of the zoning board of appeals. Is that a customary section to allow that, or, or is it sort of a toss-up?
Well, it's not in the statute, but you're talking to the person who helped the city of Holy Oak rezone its downtown. If you didn't have something like that, there wouldn't be a downtown. So I've seen other instances in which it, it's very useful. I'm reminded of the Sterling Inn. Wonderful place, right in the center of town. There was a community hub for many years. I was working out there in the eighties. When the kitchen caught on fire, they couldn't rebuild it. They couldn't afford to rebuild it. And since then, there have been two or three people that have made a pass at reopening, one for a cooking school. The building's now 20 years past prime, but again, it's, if you just say it's beached whale, you're never gonna be able to have the opportunity to reuse it.
Okay, um. And the other question that came up at the board of selectmen's meeting last night, and I will share my screen here again. Sorry. Was whether or not, I think people understood this first collection of changes to dwellings that don't conform to zoning. The question was changes in use. Could that be separated out? It's not in the current bylaw. It's silent in our current bylaw. And the, the proposal is that special permit would allow a change in use if it's less detrimental to the neighborhood. If we were to remove that provision, 7.2, how does that leave us vulnerable given case law?
Well, those, the, the term change or substantial extension of the use is in the statute. So the, the message in the eligible or permissible changes section is that unless you list it, you can't do it. You would, I think, always want to preserve the option to have change or substantial extension to the use, which are take, words taken directly from the statute. It's the second one, change from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use that is not in the statute. And that's driven by case law. There was a case from the town of Winchendon in which the application would have converted a non-conforming gravel pit to a non-conforming demolition landfill. In other words, a non-conforming use today was going to be replaced by another non-conforming use, very different. But the bylaw didn't allow that. When the neighbors sued, they went on procedural grounds. So I've always offered municipalities at least the opportunity to think about whether they wanted to do what Winchin did, did not do because procedurally it would be stopped in its tracks.
Um, I was loathe to do this, but I am gonna just put up this because it has come up. This, this is the section that we're talking about, so.
Yeah, the first, number one is in the statute.
Okay. So this one, this is the question, change from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental is up to the towns. Is that correct?
It's an option. The, it comes from a case called Blasco versus Town of Winchendon.
Okay. So it's seven point. Okay. One point, that was section two.
But just to give you a much better example than a demolition landfill, I represented a gentleman who had a an old building built in the 1880s next to the hospital in downtown Norwood. In the building were six apartments and six storage units. The building was on the back property line and it was also, the use of the building for storage units was not allowed. It was non-conforming. What did he want to do? He wanted to replace it with 12 market rate flats. And that was changed from one non-conforming use to another. He argued less detrimental non-conforming use. The board agreed. The flats are there today.
Sarah Melish, the chair of the ZBA has a question.
So this goes to the issue we had at 34 Tappan, which was a moving storage entity and a developer wished to change it to four condominiums. And we were not, the CBA was not allowed to, to make a ruling on that case because it would have been a variance for a new non-conforming use. So the purpose of this is to give the ZBA the flexibility to consider those type of changes, if.
Exactly right. That's exactly right.
And Sarah, do you have an opinion that you want to share with us about what we should do here?
Well, we've had two instances. We had the one at 34 Tappan and we had the one at Two Harbor. Um, and, and I, old corner in, and I, I think that in my opinion, if we can get rid of some of the non-conforming uses that are significantly different than what's allowed in the, the district today, and they can be more amenable to what's in the district, I think that should be an option we can consider based on community input.
Okay, great. Does the board have any other comment, questions from, for Mark Barowski tonight?
Well, actually, I have a question for Mark. So in this 34 Tappan Street example, so the board might say that four housing units is less detrimental than a storage facility. How, how do they justify that? Is there some measure of detrimentalism? And, and could the neighbors object and appeal it as a result? I mean, this is a special permit after all.
Right. So Chris, special permits are either generic for new construction or used for regulation of non-conformities. When the bylaw says something like, it says here, then you can change it to another less detrimental, non-conforming use. I would think about it more, I would think about it in terms of the tools that the generic section gives you. So traffic, neighborhood character, fiscal impact, impact on utilities, impact on the environment. Those would all go in my head into measuring whether it's more or less detrimental than what's there today. It doesn't say that, but it makes sense to think about it that way. The, the standard for more or less detrimental comes from the statute, section six of the zoning act. And section nine says with regard to special permits, that you have to list specific criteria for the decision to be recognized by the court. But I, I, I think of them both pretty much the same way. I mean, while they may not be listed criteria, they're the same criteria.
And in fact, we spell out those criteria in the new section six.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Great. Any other comments from our, our questions from Mark Barowski? I, I'm hoping you'll stay, after we close the public hearing, we may have some more, the board may have some other questions, but I'm gonna turn it back to you, Ron, now officially, and I'll move to.
I think Mary has her hand up, hand up, I'm sorry.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Sue. I, so getting back to that and that Tappan Street example, I just had a question for Mark Barowski. So it sounds like, even though there's a list that you potentially look at for parking and issues like that, it becomes a very subjective. Not very, it becomes a subjective decision of what is more or less detrimental. Is that correct?
I wouldn't, I don't have any problem with calling it subjective. I, I think special permits by definition are not objective. So there, there are cases that actually say that even where you could have granted the special permit, you may deny it. And that's not at all unusual about special permits. So for example, some towns list criteria, you have to have four parking spaces. The building can't be higher than 35 feet. The developer is not entitled to a special permit just because he meets each and every one of the criteria. The board can still deny the special permit.
Yes, but I think my, my question is, is not, you know, yes, there's an, you can go either way, but I'm, the question is more, it becomes subjective if, if the, the the ZBA board decides, you know, if parking is sufficient or traffic won't be impacted or health and safety will, you know, all those things unless there's, you know, specific. health and safety, you know, all those things unless there's, you know, specific parameters of five cars or X percentage of traffic or things like that, it does become subjective.
Yeah, I think subjectivity is much more present in handling nonconformities under what would be your new article seven, section seven than it is under the performance standards, for example, that would be adopted for new special permit uses or new site plan review.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Laura.
Thanks. A question for Mark. We briefly touched on senior housing and whether we needed to be explicit about requiring ADA accessibility. An ADA is already written into civil laws. I wonder, Mark, if you would speak to the to the need to do that or to reliance on existing regulations for senior housing.
Actually, it was accessory dwelling units, Laura.
No, it was senior housing.
It was a senior housing. I mean, ADA ADUs may want to provide accessible if the senior chooses to live there or if the homeowner wants to, but I think we're asking about in the context of senior housing.
Certainly makes sense to me. It probably could add something to the effect that to the extent it's applicable, the applicant will comply with the provisions of the architectural access board. I like independent kind of borderline in terms of whether or not there would be AAB requirements, but to the but any, you know, I think it does certainly no harm to mention that.
Sarah Melish, you have another question?
I just wanted to respond to Mary Foley. I I think that the purpose, one of the purposes of the zoning board of appeals is to deal with applications that do not mark all of the boxes. And therefore, we need to make judgment calls as to whether it's appropriate for the neighborhood and how the the neighbors react. And so it's not black and white, and it just varies with the application. Thank you.
Okay, Sandy, do you have a short comment? You've had a number of comments.
Yeah, it's a question on the the de minimis on the table for the by right unconforming. Who determine is is that defined what that minimum is? And who defines that it is minimum or it needs to go to special permit?
Where does the phrase de minimis occur in the?
I think that was my word in the table. So. Yeah.
Well, there are actually cases that say this is de minimis and that's not. But you know, you they're not that many, and they're all somewhere between inches and 18 inches, if I remember correctly.
So so it is actually written into the new wording in the bylaws how much?
No.
That is.
I wouldn't do that because there's actually a famous case from Amherst year, many years ago, in which somebody with 99 or 98 feet of frontage in 100 foot district complained the delta was de minimis, and the court said, nope, you got to draw the line somewhere. You're short.
The language in the proposed bylaws, just to be clear, is that the nonconformity may be altered or changed upon the determination by the inspector that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconformity nature. Therefore, of said structure. So I think it's I think that's when we talked about this with Mark a while ago, and he said that you allow your building inspector to make that call based on his professional judgment. So.
Okay, and it's and that answers the other part of the question. It's the building instructor. Thank you.
Okay, Gary, one more thing.
Yeah, briefly, Mark, are you seeing that towns are defining on their own what affordable housing ratios they want to see used in in some of their bylaws? Because I think everybody's many people are not very happy with this 80% AMI that the state has set up. Are towns setting up like 60% or 70% standards?
The ones I've seen, Gary, go the other way. For example, here in Concord, you can do 80% AMI, which of course counts on the SHI. But we do 100 and 120, too. So we're targeting a market that's just above 80% of area median income. I I don't see many towns that are targeting 60 or 50 or 40% of AMI. Not in zoning bylaws. They may they may have 40Bs come through in which they work with the applicant.
Okay, great.
They're just called locally affordable units, but they're not SHI units.
Okay. So the last thing I guess I would like to get to closing the public hearing, and I'd like to just thank again, thank everybody for sticking with us tonight. And also remind you that zoning changes, as we're demonstrating here, are not forever. They can again be changed in November, in next April, and I'm sure that some of the things that we have proposed over time will evolve again. So there's always opportunities to make these improvements on these zoning bylaws over time. So with that said, I am going to move to change to to close the public hearing and turn the chair back to Ron.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Olney.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Sharon, 7-0 unanimous. I want to thank the public for all the good comments we have gotten tonight, and I think I'll ask the planning board to continue now to discuss some of them, and as Mark is here, I think I I'd like to continue some of this stuff that was mentioned tonight while it's fresh in our heads. Does anyone object to that? Okay.
Okay.
So there were very some very good comments tonight by the public, and I was wondering if anybody would like to bring some up and maybe include in our our recertification documents.
I had three on accessory dwelling units that I thought were interesting. Well, the first was to add a provision that there would be not a second there would that the ADU would use the existing curb cut. I thought that was a good suggestion. So I guess I'll make a motion. So let's just take them and maybe we can I'll make a motion to add to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw a provision that the ADU must use the existing curb cut driveway entrance.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it if no one else.
I tried to. I don't know why you.
Okay, Christina, second. So motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, Sarah, Sue.
So while I think that I think that it can be that it doesn't come automatically with it, I don't know how I don't know why you would take away a right that that is by special permit or it's by asking for one. It is something that you have to ask for. It doesn't come by right. It has to be approved by if this passes by the the DPW, but I don't know why you would take away a right of a general owner just because someone has a as an ADU. So if a regular, if someone with a single family could have two curb cuts, if they're approved by the by, you know, by the approving body, why would you not allow that same right from someone just because they have a ADU? I think they shouldn't. I don't think they come automatic with it, but I don't know why you would prevent prevent that. So.
Okay, further discussion, Mary. Foley.
Um, the way this ADU bylaw has been proposed is that it's kind of a you know, intent to not change neighborhood character and add more impervious surfaces and you know, scaling back parking requirements and all that. So I think that proposal that Sarah had with the curb cut flows with that. And I think if, you know, that's gonna you could have a very small street and all of a sudden have three or four ADUs if you don't already, and to say everybody by right to have two curb cuts, I think goes counterintuitive to what the ADU bylaw proposal is.
I think it's by right.
Christina.
I I heard that, Sue. It's not not by right, but put it back to the DPW, which you know, they're simply there to to look at curb cuts, not neighborhood character. So I think that it's important to have it in a bylaw.
Christina.
Um. Pretty much what Mary said, but my concern is some of these things ADUs are popping up around me, small dead end street. We keep hearing that make an impact that small dead end street. If there's two curb cuts, there's going to be no on-street parking left, and the on-street parking is already an issue. These small dead end streets were and this all small side street, they're not they're not made for two cars on each side. So and it's very onerous to go to the Board of Selectmen and get, you know, parking on one side of the street. So you're just putting a lot of neighborhood character, safety at the hands without any checks. So I don't think that this should be allowed. So I'm very concerned about even by special permit.
Okay, looks like the whole board's going to comment on this, Laura, Jenny.
Yeah, um, well, I hear what Sue's saying about not taking rights away because you're doing an ADU and perhaps where we want to address this, because we as a board, we've been talking about curb cuts before and the the detriment of adding more curb cuts is maybe we need to strengthen the language in the main part of the regulations where we talk about curb cuts. And I I don't remember what that section is, but we we kind of worked some language in there that said we're going to send it to DPW, but we discourage use of two curb cuts. Maybe what we do is strengthen it there. Everybody gets the same right, which is strongly discouraged, two curb cuts, and then anybody who wants to have a second curb cut, whatever the reason may be, ADU or not, has to go through the review process. Maybe we just need to strengthen the language overall.
Thank you. Gary Gilbert.
I think these are two separate issues. Addressing second curb cuts, you could prohibit them outright throughout town. I'm not a big fan of them. I think that they're just in general present a pedestrian pedestrian safety issue. This could be done later where you or unless someone's really clever really quickly and perhaps through dimensional standards, sort of I'm thinking along the lines of what Laura was saying. Perhaps you could set up some sort of standard spacing distances for two curb cuts and or strengthen the language we are providing to the DPW when they give out the permits. But I see them as sort of separate issues, but the basic idea for the ADUs is people should still be allowed to do what they normally can do on their single-family home properties. If they want to add a little addition, they want to have a second curb cut, they go through the procedure. We don't want to take those rights away.
Thank you, Chris. Olney.
Yeah, I just want to second what Laura said. I think I think second curb second curb cut should be by special permit, and that takes care of it.
So I'd like to run my I'd like to clarify my motion by sharing the screen and showing you a proposal. So this is the ADU language, and I'm my motion is to add in this section, they're under regulations, this language, can you see this? So the ADU shall be contained within a residential structure, not in a detached building, and use the existing driveway entrance. And then further down, we have special permit is to construct in residential already wanted to and to construct that do not comply with the provisions of 9.1.2, which is the section that I just proposed modifying. So I think if somebody wants a second driveway curb cut, they get a special permit. And that's my that is my motion to be clarified. So add and use the existing driveway entrance to 9.1.2, section two.
A second.
Well, I have a couple more. So I still have a couple of hands up under discussion. So I assume you're making an amendment to your motion.
Clarifying my motion.
Okay, all right. So we have the motion and we have a discussion still. So Christina.
I don't think I was next, but that's. So I guess my concern or my question is about that, is that typically how our inspection and permitting process works, someone goes to the building inspector, they get the permit and the curb cut comes at the end. So if this is by right and they don't have it, they already have the ADU by right, but they don't have the parking. It just it seems like we're doing it a little backwards and we're not we're not being considerate of you're allowing someone to have the unit when they may not have the actual parking and they need to change the character, do a curb cut. So I'm concerned about the process, the procedure of getting the curb cut before the permit for the ADU could happen. That's that's my concern, giving the ADU where it may not be feasible for an extra car, even one, to park on the property and then come back and say we need a curb cut. So I guess where does where do we figure that process in, which comes first?
Isn't the, excuse me, can I just answer that?
Sarah, you want to clarify your motion?
I well, I think though the clarifying that the building inspector would give an ADU certificate if it complies with the four conditions subordinate to the primary dwelling, contained in the residential structure, not a detached building, and the existing driveway entrances entrance, so that he's going to say, what's your driveway? And they're going to say, here's how they're going to use that, no larger than 900 square feet and no new exterior entries, et cetera. So I think it is the way I've proposed it is one of the criteria that the building inspector would tick off when he gives a.
I understand. So so someone has the parking spot. It's not ideal. It's difficult. Um, and they go and they come back for a special permit. They come back for a curb cut. It now is the ADU permit gone, and they have to reapply after someone's in. That's my concern. Everyone may just apply for the curb cut after the ADU is, and they could prove that one parking spot has been established.
Okay, and Mary? Comments on the motion?
I just had a I missed the part, Sarah, where you changed you. You added it up to section, I think, set 9.1.2. And then 9.1.3, it's saying you can park in the driveway. And then who was the special permit granting authority at the bottom? ZBA or planning board?
Uh, ZBA.
So they would be ZBA would be for curb cuts as well?
No, this is for the ADUs that don't use these, don't comply.
So who so are we back to not requiring a special permit for a curb cut? I'm confused.
I think the curb cut would come back to the planning board, wouldn't it?
And the curb cut is the planning board, but.
So but I don't see that in here.
Maybe we should then make a third line there that in the event that there are second curb cuts needed, it'll be by special permit by the planning board, something like that.
I feel like that's circular. I feel like it's already exists. If you need a second driveway entrance, you go to DPW. If they think it's does not comply, then you come back to the planning board. That's elsewhere in the bylaw. In general bylaw.
Okay, got it. Okay, any more comments on the motion?
I I guess I would I would just comment that that perhaps we have to add something into the curb cut bylaw for ADUs then.
We may need to, but.
To me is not circular. It means it's a circular way for someone to not have to come in front of a board for curb cut because now it's at the DPW.
Okay, I will. Any other comments?
So there's no answer to that?
Excuse me?
There's no comment.
There's no comment.
Okay, so I'll take a vote on Sarah, uh, Creighton's emotion to, um, add, uh, so could you put that up again? Uh, could you restate your motion?
So add and use the existing driveway entrance in nine point one point two, section two.
Section two. To add that, that language, uh, do you have that Sharon? And I'll take a, uh, roll call vote on that, on this motion, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
I'm very conflicted on this because I think we're leaving a lot, um, un- unspecified, but I, you know, currently it's moving in the right direction. So I'll say yes, but I, I, I think we're not.
Done.
No.
Not perfect. I got it.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yeah, I'm not gonna let the, uh, perfect be the enemy of the good, yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. It's unanimous seven to zero. The, uh, next item, Sarah, on the ADUs, was it on the occupancy?
Well, I had a small change. I make a motion that we insert, uh, the ADU comma, if rented, comma, may not be rented. I think that comma gets left, uh, for periods of time less than six months and we require a left written lease.
Okay, there's a motion to add, uh, to nine point one point three, section two, the, the term if rented is, uh, to the, uh, language on that line. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I, I see Laura with her hand up.
You need to delete the comma after may not be rented. Otherwise it makes.
I did that. It is.
Oh, I thought you were saying you needed to keep it. Okay, that's what I was objecting to. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Foley?
Who in the town is reviewing the, the six month lease?
The building inspector.
So he'll have copy of these leases?
No, I think, I think he has an app, there's a.
It's an affidavit that's sent to him that says, but I'm the owner of this house and I'm leasing this for allowing my mother to live in it.
Also, the neighbors, you know, it's a little bit of the neighbors see, you know, the, it lists on Airbnb, they're gonna refer to this and say, oh, this is, um, can I also?
I, I would just to, to close my, that my concern is that I would hope we're trying to do bylaws that we're not having neighbors be the police of other neighbors, that we're trying to do it so that, um, just like fences make good neighbors, good, good bylaws make good neighbors. And I, I think that if we're trying, if we're our fallback is to pit neighbor against neighbor, we're not doing our job.
The current bylaw has nothing.
No, agreed. I'm, I'm just saying in general.
I agree.
Uh, Sue, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say that practically speaking, um, the building inspector staff will be maintaining those and keeping it, so. The affidavit, so it'd be the building department in general, so. I know there's concern about the amount of work that these changes may heap on him. I just wanted to add that practicality.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote on, uh, Sarah's motion. Um, I'd like to repeat it if you could put it up again for Sharon.
Insert if comma, if rented comma, may not be rented for periods less than six months.
This is a, this is, this is an insertion into nine point one point three, section two. Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Only? Ms. Tenny?
Ron, I'm sorry, I was gonna add one more point of discussion. Is it too late for that? I don't have to. I was gonna add a clarification. My clarification was second of six months.
I think it's, I, I'm.
Clear to, you think the intent is clear?
I think it's a clear.
Okay.
Okay, a chair vote, yes, unanimous seven to zero. Ms. Creighton, any further, uh, changes?
Well, on the ADU, there was a suggestion that we, um, specify that detached structures be limited to nine hundred square feet. Um, it's my opinion that we pass on that one because a detached structure would be subject to special permit review. And a lot of times I think these ADUs end up in existing detached structures, which might be nine hundred and twenty-two feet or whatever they might be. So that's my recommendation is that we move, that we pass on that one, but, um, so I'm not gonna make a motion on that topic, but, um, I see Sarah Melish has a comment on that, Chris. I mean, Ron.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that you require the detached structures to, to require setbacks of a primary residence.
Oh, as opposed to an accessory building?
Right, because the accessory building, the setbacks are assuming you don't have residential activity in it. And it seems to me if you're gonna do an ADU in a detached structure, it should conform with the setbacks for a primary structure, which would, you know, help eliminate a lot of residents' concerns.
That's the allowing ADUs and detached structures. I thought we weren't.
Under special permit.
Oh, under special.
And I just think that to have that additional caveat in the special permit would be helpful.
Do we need, do we need, do we need to put this in the zoning or can't the special permit just require that?
It'd be nice to have it in the bylaw.
All right, um.
But it's up to you.
Any comments from the board on that, on Sarah Milisch's comments?
Hey, Sue Brown's got her hand raised.
Uh, Sue, sorry. Oh, I, I'm sorry, Sue, Christine, Marion.
That's okay. Yeah, so while I can appreciate, um, Sarah's interest in having some backup in the bylaw, I do think contextually, there may be some instances where you might want to waive that if there were no, um, you know, if there were no neighbors and it was an existing structure and that was the most viable use, so. I, I, I think it should be left as a special, up to the special permit granting authority, just so we're not boxing us in and eliminating an option that you may wish you had.
Dana?
I guess on that, I wanted to back up something else. Well, on that one, maybe existing needs to be. Um, but new permit, new ADUs need to meet the setbacks. There's no reason why a new ADU wouldn't be built in a setback. Um, I guess the question before that was, and we passed over rather quickly, I think the idea was limiting the detached ADU to a certain, to nine hundred square feet versus nine twenty-three, but I think the comment was to put the max on it. So whatever two-car garage ADU would be, I think is what, I don't know, maybe it's a thousand square feet, or I think they're with it, they were looking for a maximum versus some kind of guidance that you couldn't um, go over something. We have thirty-five percent in the current bylaw, but we, we just kind of leave it open at this point. We just say special permit with no max. I think that's what.
So are you making a motion?
I think we brushed over the last one without exploring the second part of the concern. So we took away thirty-five percent and we left it open now. So I think we need to talk about some kind of what a max would be. What would be reasonable? I guess I'm looking session on what would be, we, the bylaw said thirty-five percent, so.
Well, the, the proposed, the by, the proposal that we've been working on says ADU shall not be larger than nine hundred square feet of living area. Um, I, this is a, this has not been approved, this number five, I just stuck it in there as a doc, talking point. So I think we do say nine hundred square feet of living area, that is something that can be, it's a trigger for, um, a special permit if, if this section regulations do not, do not comply, if the ADU does not comply with these. Um, number five is, it's not, we have not voted number five, so, um, just to be clear.
So I think the resident's concern was, what if it's not detached, you're going to a special permit and then there's no guidance. We used to have thirty-five percent. Now we have nothing. That's my concern. Like, should we put something in there to put a cap on it, some number? I mean, we could just have another ADU be built the same size as the existing structure, I mean, under this, if it met the setbacks. If you had a three thousand square foot, they could say a two thousand square foot, um, is.
You'd need a special permit for that.
No, absolutely, yes, but you don't want, you, we had thirty-five percent before, now we have nothing, is my point. Under the special permit, we took out language and opened it up to whatever size the special permit ZBA would allow. I think we need guidance on it for a maximum.
Okay, um, any comments from the board?
Ron, can you see Mary, Laura and Sarah all have their hands up?
I'm sorry, Mary.
Um, I have a few comments. One, I do not see in the draft ADU bylaw that I have where we're discussing detached ADUs, so I must.
I don't think we're not.
Right here, it'll be contained, well, within the residential structure there, so therefore if it's not in the residential structure, it would be detached. And we're subject to a special permit.
We're not allowing detached ADUs though.
We're, well, a detached would be one that is not contained within the residential structure.
Yes, but in the presentation and in prior discussions, we said we were getting rid of the four point one point two, I think it is, which is the, you know, it, um, with employee type of thing.
But, so we are getting rid of the proposed that, so just to be clear, how do we get rid of that? Let's start with that. So this article as, um, is to see, uh, as if the town will modify the bylaw by deleting accessory use number seven in the table of uses in section four, which says as part of an existing garage, stable or other existing structure, family living quarters for an employee of an oc- owner occupant. And then there's, you know, uh, ZBA, ZBA, ZBA across the board. So get rid of that accessory use. So, um, and modify the use table to yes, and ZBA in the residential districts, um, to reflect the following. Um, so that's how the, uh, zoning, that's how the article does that. Deletes it from the table, because the table at that point will hopefully already be established. So does that make, does that clarify that piece?
Well, again, what you're saying is we're getting rid of allowing a detached ADU.
No.
No, we're saying, we're getting rid of that, uh, allowed use, allowed accessory use. And then we go down and say the requirements for a, um, ADU certificate from the building inspector are primary dwelling, occupied same lot, um, because.
Shall be contained within the residential structure.
That's right, right. And then we go down further and say, special permit is if you do not comply with the sections nine point one point two.
Um, to construct an ADU that does not comply with.
Right, so all of the provisions of nine point one point two.
So now you're saying, as long as somebody goes and gets a special permit, they can have a detached, and to Christine's point, as big as they want, still only one car parking.
They have to get.
Doesn't make any sense to me. Cause you could have, now have a twelve hundred, two thousand square foot ADU with a, a, a special permit. I don't know if the ZBA would grant it or not, but still only require one off-street parking spot.
I guess the answer is, it could happen if the, if the Z, if the ZBA um, was inclined to do that. I don't think that, that is, I think we have to trust that the ZBA is going to be consistent with the purpose, um, here, um.
But we're not putting any provisions in for them. We're not giving them any guidelines.
You could help us with that. Sorry, I'm.
Do you have any comment? Sarah Melish, do you have any comments on that?
Yes. So I reviewed the ten applications we've received since two thousand nineteen that might have been applied for an ADV, ADU. Fifty percent of those were in detached dwellings, which were quote-unquote employees. Not, not really. Um, only two of those were under nine hundred square feet. They ranged from, and the, the only one under the ADU provision was under seven hundred square feet. So they ranged from seven hundred square feet to twenty-four hundred square feet. And they were predominantly for elderly parents who sold their homes and paid for renovations and improvements on their children's home. So they had a place to live and could get rid of their homes, it could spend time in Florida. Um, so the, under the existing bylaw for the employee in the detached dwelling, there's no limit on the thirty-five percent. And so my suggestion is, if they go to attached dwelling, if we limit it to requiring the setback for primary dwellings, then that would help enormously. Um, but it's, you know, people don't want to live, I'm sorry. People don't want to live in nine hundred square feet and what's, what's funny is in the senior housing, you have twelve hundred square feet for a two-bedroom. In the ADU, you have nine hundred square feet for a two-bedroom. It, it makes no sense. And, and we're, we there were, of the ten applications, there was only one that potentially could have been rented. It was all for family. And, you know, so I think you need to take that in consideration and you know, we need to get rid of the employee in the separated structure because, yeah, I think three of those wouldn't have qualified, but they said they were gonna have employment contracts. Yeah, right. You know, but, but a lot of people have separate structures and, and, and parents want their space. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Any other comments on the, um, well, we don't have a motion and, I'm sorry.
So I, can I just, Ron, could I?
Still has her hand up too.
I just have a quick response for Sarah, which is nine hundred square feet is a state mandate for accessory dwelling units. That's why we're stuck with the nine hundred.
Christina?
Yes, my comment to Sarah, um, and I hear that and I see that, that a lot of people buy and build and refurb dwelling units for family, um, but you're not in that home forever. So the previous caller that was concerned about, okay, this is great for right now, but what happens in twenty years? So are those two things rentals or time changes? You, you could just change a neighborhood very quickly. And I understand the need to have, um, family members age in place or with siblings or with children, but, um, what are we doing for the future?
Uh, Mary?
Yes, um, just my comment is, comments are. Yes, um, just, my comment is, comments are that, um, I agree with Sarah Melish, I think, you know, at least with the setback stuff. I mean, that's definitely moving in the right direction, um, and Chris's point, um, I just, I I don't think we're stuck with the nine hundred feet, we're stuck, quote, stuck with the nine hundred feet. If we want to do a simple majority vote, we could make the ADU um, a thousand square feet or twelve hundred square feet, and then that would need the two-thirds majority vote. Is that correct?
That I don't know.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, but on the other hand, you could go for a twelve hundred square foot ADU with a special permit.
Right.
So the.
No, but I'm just saying, we're, the current ADU bylaw proposed is at nine hundred, because that'll get us to only needing a simple majority.
Sure, it's a state standard, yes, that's right.
Mark, can I just ask, Ron, if Mark Raskin would weigh in on that, is that the case, that if it's, because it's nine hundred square feet, it requires a simple majority, and if that minimum was nine hundred and one, it would require two-thirds?
I believe that the state definition is nine hundred feet or fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit on the property, whichever is smaller. So, that's what the ADU definition is. Let me look, I have it in the, I have it in the book supplement, hang on. Go ahead, keep talking, I'll find.
While you're looking that up.
Wow, we have no motions on the floor, correct?
Right, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna make a motion. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to add a fifth requirement that we meet the, that the ADU meet the setback, that the, um, that the ADU meet the setback requirements in the district, oops. Um, so add a fifth provision under nine point one point two regulations meet the setback requirements of the district. Um, and we've talked about that, I think while it doesn't require it for the special permit, it certainly gives guidance about intent to the, um, question of a detached unit, um, or a non-compliant unit to the ZBA.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Creighton has made a motion, uh, to modify section nine point one point two, the fifth section, um, allowing the setbacks to meet the requirement of the district. Is there a second on that motion?
Back in, picking that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Sue Brown.
I'm just wondering if that is in the, the right place. Because it's talking, it's saying that it must be within the same building, if it is in the same building. And if it's not, if, if it doesn't meet setback requirements, that means it's in a non-conforming building. So I'm just, I just, I, I know what, I know the intent, I just don't know if there's a better place for it.
Mark, do you have any comment on that section being inserted in nine one two?
Um, I was busy looking up the definition, which I just sent to both Sarah and Sue.
Okay, so another question has come up. To add, uh, to add a, in nine point one point two, uh, under the, a fifth section to, uh, meet the setbacks of the district. Is that the place to put a, uh, a, uh, regulation?
Sure, yeah. You can put it there.
So, so I think that's the place for it, is regulations about things you have to meet, and then there's use regulations. So those are the, those are the two regulation areas we have.
It was a special little critter, so you can put all the regs in the section for the ADU.
The, the reason I restructured it is so that when, is to say that these are the triggers for the, uh, special permit. The others are just required, like occupancy and lease and all that stuff.
It, would it be, but, hmm, okay, I'm not gonna let the perfect be the enemy of the good either. Good, good job there.
Uh, Ms. Foley.
I, I, I agree with adding this, I would just like to, um, also see moving forward if we could try to firm up the special permit part of this as well, but not in this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Stoneley.
Uh, so the only thing I'm a little bit, well, I guess so if this were, if there's been a special permit, does this give, really give guidance to the Board of Appeals? I mean, what if it's a garage that's sitting in, you know, not in the that's sitting in the setback and they want to turn that into an ADU, would they be unable to do so?
Nebraska, any comment on that?
It depends on how you set it up. If you says, if you say that the detached structure has to meet the setbacks for, for a principal structure, that, I would add that, because some detached structures are accessory structures. Then, that's a rule. We have that.
No. Um.
Changes there, so, um, all right, um, Sarah Melish, it's like you're part of our group.
Yeah, I would like to see a condition, I don't where, know where it goes. But, that, if there's any special permit issued for an ADU in a detached structure, that it must meet the setbacks of a primary structure.
Number five.
This is, I think.
Yeah.
Number five is talking about by right. And there needs to be something about, if it's a special permit, that the
we can set that.
Any ADU in a detached structure much, must meet, meet the set, setback of the principal structure. Because we've got loads of those that are in, you know, we've got loads of things in the setback and it's a whole different ballgame if it's an accessory structure, people living there.
Okay, so we've gone down this tributary, but the motion was on adding this, um, this paragraph five, and I, I, um, will continue with comments on that motion, Ms. Tenny.
I was wondering if we were trying to distinguish it all for a detached structure for, uh, repurposing of an existing structure, which maybe if it's a carriage house or something, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't meet the same dimensional requirements, maybe it's in the setback. Do we want to distinguish where there is uh, flexibility for the ZBA to consider an ADU within an existing structure versus a new one conforming to the requirements for a primary dwelling, just a question. To Mark or to Sarah?
I, you know, my opinion is, if we're gonna add a residential dwelling unit to an accessory structure, it should meet the setbacks of the principal structure. Because it's a whole different ballgame, and we're seeing whole bunches of, I mean, we've had requests for employees in the detached dwellings and they're within two feet of the side, you know, setback, and that's a whole different ballgame.
Or changing the use, though I don't think it's out of line. It's not a garage anymore, it's a primary residence, so.
Right, right. That's my opinion. And I just, I don't know how you fit it into the bylaw, but it seems to me if under spec, you could put something in is if under special permit, there's an ADU in a detached dwelling, much, must meet the setbacks of the primary dwell.
So we're a little off, we're a little off the motion, we're a little off the motion here, I think.
I'll shut up.
We're talking about attached ADUs, um, go ahead, Chris, I, I still have three hands up.
So, I, I, I think we should go ahead and do the, um, the, the setback requirements for the, by right, and then add something in the nine point one point four under special permits.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, Sue.
Nope, uh, um, Chris found it. I was going to say that what Sarah's looking for should be under the nine point one point four.
Yeah, I, I have a proposal for that, too, so maybe vote this one.
So on the nine point one point, on the motion to amend, add a fifth section to nine point one point two, um, uh, having it meet the setback requirement of the district, uh, motion's been made and seconded. There's no further, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call, vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Mr. Lucio.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
I don't think he's here.
Oh, he's gone, okay, Mr. Allman.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
And the chair votes just six zero, sharing, the motion passes.
Okay, then I am.
Now, Chris, did you, go ahead, sorry.
Um, maybe this is what Chris wants to make a motion for, or something like this.
Yes, yeah, this is a yeah, I may, I'll make that motion.
Can I, hold on, could we add something, the maximum size here?
Let's take it one at a time.
Okay. So, uh, Chris has made the motion to add, uh, this, uh, sentence to sec, to section nine point one point four, uh, section two, uh, provided they meet the setback requirements of the primary dwelling in the district, motion made is their second.
Is it primary dwelling requirements of the district, wouldn't it be, I guess, right?
Either way.
Saying requirements twice now.
Oh.
Don't say it twice.
Okay.
Setback requirements of the primary dwelling in the district.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, as written, uh, been made, is there a second, as written? Second from Ms. Delicio, uh, any discussion, Sarah Melish?
I just would, yeah, I just think you needed, maybe you've got it. The primary dwelling setback, okay, sorry, got it, nevermind.
Okay, any further discussion, otherwise I'll take a roll call. And further discussion, no, uh, Ms. Creighton, on the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Allman.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
And the chair votes just six zero, so the motion passes. Okay, uh, Mary Foley.
I think this section needs two more motions, I think one motion for the maximum size and one motion for parking requirements.
So which section are we talking about, nine point one point?
Nine point one point four, so then it would be, I guess, number three. I don't know, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I'll pull it up again.
Nine point one point four, Sarah, if you can get that, that would be great.
So, say, um, sorry, I was saving it, so I didn't lose it. Um, nine point one point four.
Okay, what's the motion, Mary?
So I'd like to make a motion to add to nine point one point four special permits under the ADU to add um, must meet parking requirements um, um, of primary, same as primary dwelling unit in that district.
You're requiring two cars?
Well, if these, if these, you know, if the, if these don't have a, a maximum size, um, and so they could be, to Sarah's point, she's seen them up to twenty-four hundred square feet, so, yes.
Think that's.
Must meet, must meet parking requirements, same as the district. Is that what we, is that the motion?
The district requirements for.
Same as the district requirements.
All the districts have the same parking requirement, which is two spaces per residential unit.
So, um, would I, would I, um, insert?
You would insert number, like a number three?
Can we just the size of it first, and maybe that'll inform the parking?
The size of the, um.
The cap.
The cap, yeah. I'm gonna propose fifteen hundred, I'd like to make a motion, if, if I may, Mary, first, to limit the size of an ADU.
I have to withdraw my motion, then.
Uh, would you be willing to withdraw it for a second?
I'd be willing to withdraw my motion.
The motion's been withdrawn, Mr. Allman, you wanna make?
So I'd like to propose a motion to add to number, uh, to nine point one point four uh, that, uh, number three, that an ADU um, cannot exceed fifteen hundred square feet and two bedrooms.
Way over the governor.
Yeah, this is, oh, that's right, well, yes, but this is by special permit, not by right.
Why do you pick that number, Chris?
Uh, well, the size of a garage is probably about twelve hundred square feet for a second floor of a garage.
They said three sixty as a garage.
Three sixty?
Or single.
No, for a two-car garage.
What?
No, no.
Twenty-five feet.
No.
Twenty-five feet by forty.
It's gotta be eight hundred or something.
If we made it a third again as larger, that would be twelve hundred square feet.
Okay, I'll go with twelve.
Size of a small house.
Yeah, twelve hundred square.
Not acceptable.
No. Maybe I can combine that and Mary's.
Well, can we, can we talk about the parking requirement, though, before we make that motion back on the table?
Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I'm concerned about adding a by right or a, or a, um, uh, as district parking requirement. The intent of this is to keep these footprints small for structures as well as parking. We've already limited the driveway to one curb cut, which I think is the right way to go. Um, I'm very concerned about increasing impervious service, especially for, you know, if you're talking about most of these going to family members and your elderly parents, they probably don't need another two cars, they may be driving less. And so I'd really like to make that, um, keep it at the, um, current, which I think is one car. And then if anything is beyond that, it would go through a special permit. I, I don't want to see the increase of parking, just based on an arbitrary. Yeah, a rather arbitrary trigger, it seems to me, so I would, I would advocate for not making that change.
Okay, um, um, Mary, did you want to restate your motion? Or make a comment?
Yeah, no, I don't want to restate my motion, because I, you know, though I know we don't want to add impervious surface, um, we can't ignore that people are gonna have cars and most people are gonna have two cars. We, we can't, um, assume that this is gonna be senior housing and it's one-car dwelling, and we have a parking problem. These ADUs could be in any district. So, it's gonna flow out onto the street, and I think, um, we have to plan for that.
This is a by special permit, so the Board of Appeals can, can weigh that in making their decision.
Can waive the parking?
They can establish a condition that it has to have two parking spaces if they want, or they can say no parking spaces. Whatever they, it's up to them.
Yeah, and, and that's a concern. I mean, in, to, not that, that the ZBA, um, makes those determinations, but that we're really not, um, planning for cars and parking.
Uh, I don't like it.
You know, and I know, I know there's, there's definitely members on the board that, that don't like parking, but I, I I think it's very clear, driving around town, that there's a fair amount of cars.
I, 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 you know, I think this town has a parking problem, eh, two, two, three months of the year, when it's a hot weekend day. Otherwise, I always found a parking space. I, I don't know where, you know, there's perception that there's a parking problem. I don't know, personally, I seem to find a space anytime, except in the summer. But that's my opinion. Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, so I, so I have an issue with the square footage and bedroom restrictions. I think that that should not be in a special permit. I think that our parking requirements for a two-family is three cars. And I think that that should be the same. And I think that that should be the same for an ADU. So an ADU should require one additional parking space. If if you want to change the parking requirement for a two family, four cars, then you could extend it to the ADU. That's not the parking requirements we have today. And and I think that under special permit, I mean, I'm sorry, but seniors who are selling their five thousand square foot houses. Now building additions under the children's houses, they're exceeding twelve hundred square feet. And. I I don't think we should limit the size. It's it's not realistic to deal with the housing crisis in Manchester. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Brown. Sue, did you have a comment?
Sorry, I just want to defer to the board first and then I'll go.
Okay, Christina.
So I guess back to Sarah's comments about the size of the ADUs that she's seeing anywhere from seven hundred square feet to twenty four hundred square feet. I just at twenty four hundred square feet, anything really above a thousand, twelve hundred square feet, I don't think it's accessory. And you're talking about now building two homes on a lot that is not permissible. So at some point, we need to. Keep this worded accessory, not another single standalone dwelling unit, which these are, in my opinion, if anything is above twelve hundred square feet. And this could easily be two Gordon College students. This could be two Endicott students. And they can't walk or ride bikes in the middle of winter to class. So they're going to need two cars. If it's two bedrooms, they need two cars to get there. I don't know any college students that are going to share a car to get the class there. So. I I just don't think it's realistic. And I, Laura, I I don't remember the exact words that you said arbitrary. Let's not be arbitrary. Let's do some more work and find out what this parking situation is. And we could have asked. How many cars were registered to residences and not made it arbitrary? So. That's my two cents. I we need to keep accessory in this definition and in this by law, not twenty four hundred square feet is not accessory.
Ms. Creighton.
I think that because we're seeing applications that are twenty four hundred square feet is not. That is is really another house on the lot. I agree with Christina about that. So I do think if we want this to be an accessory dwelling unit, then it should be size limited. I think. I might suggest fifteen hundred square feet as a more realistic compromise. But I do think we want to keep this accessory. I also support the one parking space as the requirement. But, you know, people figure out how to park, you know, sometimes two cars in single spot, then people move things around. You know, all of us, I don't know, I've lived in many apartments where that was the case. So. I, uh, I think one spot is fine, but I. I appreciate that people are coming in with accessory dwelling units that are large, but I think that that is. Not necessarily the right, what we're thinking about here with ADUs. So I like having a side limit. I'm not sure that we've got it properly worded, so but nonetheless. Figure out our intent and then we can word it properly.
Thank you, Laura.
I just want to respond to the previous comments. The three parking spaces, I think. I appreciate Sarah Melish's point, so we already are requiring that for two family. Therefore, let's require it for the ADUs as well. In that case, it's not arbitrary and it makes sense. My objection to the continued concern with adding more parking around town, this is not a public parking accessible space to to visitors. This is residential parking that is making more impervious surface on the, you know, kind of. Character of the town. So that does have an impact on the neighborhood, a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. It also has a detrimental impact on our stormwater management, on our reliance on our infrastructure. On the water that we're putting into our stormwater and wastewater treatment plant. So I I feel strongly that we shouldn't be. Trying to solve a problem that, in my opinion, doesn't exist, which is houses private parking on on private lots. I'll say that about the parking. As far as the ADUs, I agree with both Christina and Sarah. Him and Creighton about the size. I think the intent here is that we're trying to create. Dwelling that is smaller, that is accessory, that is not intended to be yet another, you know, mega house for people to move into. But is trying to create a diversity of housing that is smaller, that is modest in size. The twelve hundred feels right to me. But I mean, I think that the intent is 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 not to just simply meet people's. To to meet the express need of people wanting to build, you know, twenty five hundred or fifteen thousand square foot additions. But to really be looking for that diversity of housing size and therefore a more modest, you know. If rented, a more modest income to go along with it and more modest living circumstances. Thank you.
You, Sue.
Thanks, Ron. I just want to come around to circle the whole thing and and. Kind of remind us that in other areas of bylaw, we've really tried to think about how to be performance based. And what we're reverting to here in the ADUs is being trying to be very prescriptive. And what I think what we're eliminating is the ZBA's ability to be contextual in their decision making. I think that that they're very well versed and would be able to make this decision. If you have an an outbuilding that's already existing and it's three thousand square feet, why would you not let? It be developed into an ADU. And or not let it be allowed simply because it was more than nine hundred or fifteen hundred square feet. I understand that I I and again, this is by special permit. So if they're saying, no, that really constitutes another building. Then they don't have to grant the special permit. But if it's eighteen hundred square feet and it's away from everyone. You know, why not consider it? So anyway, I just think we're really trying hard to be performance based and to think about the context. And I think just by adding all these. Prescriptive ideas in terms of the size and the number of bedrooms and the number of parking. That we're really not serving us ourselves well and trying to be contextual in our decision making.
Okay, thanks, Sue. So I'm going to circle back to the motion. Mine point one point four.
Can I just get clarity from Mark Bobrowski? If we want to regulate an upper limit on size, is this the best place to do it?
Yes.
Okay. And is this language makes sense if the ADU does not exceed twelve hundred? Or should that go up here?
I think it should all go in the ADU section. I wouldn't start putting it in dimensional section, like the generic dimensional.
I know. So it's so right here, it makes sense as we. Okay, thank you.
Chris, I think it, well, I defer, but I think it goes exactly where you put the setback requirements and make it all a part of that. Unless you just break out number two into two A, two B, two three. I mean, it just doesn't follow the same pattern to construct. And if the. It's just structural, it's not the content.
Are people okay with that if I were to do?
Yeah. Sarah, go ahead while she's changing. Sarah Melish.
I I just want to let you know under B, you're tying our hands.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure it's appropriate.
Understood. Well, we haven't voted on it. Any further discussion?
You're willing to come to my meeting.
I'm I'm going to complicate things or ask Chris if he'd be willing to. Make that twelve hundred, fifteen hundred.
Actually, I was wondering if whether we should say, make it performance based and say that as long as the ZBA. Certifies that this uses accessory to the.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Oh, can I add something? That we had thirty five percent before. I just accessory. It's too big. It's not serving the purpose that we're intending here. We're trying to get diverse housing, not somewhere and not another normal sized house. I think twelve hundred square feet is fine. Anything bigger than that, I'm not going to be okay with. Anything bigger to me needs two parking spots. It's a second home, subdivide the lot. Like, this just doesn't make any sense if you get any bigger. And I don't know, maybe Sarah, you can call it something else, but it's doesn't meet this ADU by law. It's.
Christine, what's the square footage of your house?
I don't know. Probably thirty nine hundred square feet.
Forty nine hundred?
Thirty nine.
Thirty nine hundred times point three five. Whoops. Sorry. Thirty nine hundred times point three five is thirteen sixty five. That's more than twelve hundred.
No. So one possibility to Christina's point is to if the ADUs does not exceed X percent of the. Primary residents and leave it at that. But. I mean, I think we're struggling with trying to figure out how do we encourage ADUs? And we've said we want them to be small and affordable and all these things. And if we're really getting twenty four hundred square foot ADUs. That seems to me to be inconsistent with the purpose of what we're trying to do.
This is a developer's dream, right? Like, if we're going to allow them to be maxed out, someone's going to buy a house with some extra land and they're just going to build them. They're going to rent them. I mean, that's not the purpose of what we're trying to do here.
I I don't know if people will necessarily do that, but they would be allowed.
The developer will, if we don't limit the size.
Well, you'd have to have a special permit.
Okay, okay. They get a special permit. No big deal.
That's up to the ZBA to keep the charm and character.
Can I can I add something? The way this is currently worded for the special permits, it's saying to construct any ADU. People are going to get special permits if they want to do an ADU in their house that's more than nine hundred square feet. They're going to have to get a special permit. So.
Correct.
I don't think the wording is correct. But with what's the motion on the table, I, you know, we do have to, you know, we're we're proposing an ADU. To increase housing at a small scale. And, you know, honestly, even twelve hundred square feet is not necessarily small scale. So I. Yeah, I would stay stay with the twelve hundred square feet. I'm fine with the, you know, I'm not fine, but I understand the one car parking. And, you know, I think it does have to be a formula for what the primary residence. Resident is residence is otherwise. You know, somebody could have a twenty five hundred square foot house and build a twenty four hundred. Square foot ADU because it's. That much smaller, so.
Sarah? Sarah Melish.
Yeah, I I just think we need to eliminate eliminate nine point one point four B two. To be. I think we need the flexibility to deal with what's required. And we're what we're seeing is seniors who have a lot of money. They're selling in their houses and they're moving in with their children and they're paying for the additions. And they need to have the opportunity to do that. Um, is it affordable housing? No. But it, you know, it's it's. It's what we need and we just need flexibility. And we have twelve hundred square feet. And two bedrooms. That's not enough flexibility. You know, I'm single and I live in a thirty four hundred square foot house. So I I just think that B is not realistic. And we we would like to have the opportunity to judge. The property and determine what's appropriate for the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Laura.
You all live in a lot of big houses. I don't live in a house that big. I think that there is. That there's enough. Discussion around ADUs and we want to get people on board with us. You know, we're capping them at twenty. This is maybe version one. So I would say let's not expand too much right now in terms of the size cap. I I suggest we remove the count on the bedrooms. I don't, I think, two bedrooms. I lived in a twelve hundred square foot house with three bedrooms for more than fifteen years happily. But. Uh, so I would suggest we remove that. Otherwise, I I think for now, I I hear you, Sue, with everything you're thinking about the performance requirements. For now, I would suggest we keep a cap that's a modest number, like a twelve hundred on there. Let's get used to having ADUs. You know, maybe when it's time to to bump up the cap, we can talk about a bigger number. But I just think the intent right now is to have modest additions that are apartment sized dwellings. For people to rent or to to, you know, have an in-law apartment. That's that's what we're going after. We're not looking at how to. Take a large house and expand it. So I think if we can, I'm just concerned that if we keep going up here on the cap, we might sink the whole ship. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks, Laura. Mary.
I I agree with what Laura said. And I I I think the examples that Sarah Melish keeps bringing up, I think that's a different category, right? That, you know, if if people are looking for their parents to move in, you know, and want to build twenty four, twenty five hundred square foot. Space, I think that's a different issue than accessory dwelling units. And, you know, what happens then when, you know. The parents move out or, you know. You know, then it just becomes this large rental that is now in a single resident district, but now is this attached kind of thing and it's a large rental. So. Yeah, I think that's a separate issue from what accessory dwelling units is supposed to do.
Okay, I think we're beating this to death. I mean, it's ten o'clock. I'd like to, Christina, you have something short?
I mean, Sarah's concerns were we're taking out a lot of language and a lot of protections. And the number one is like, it used to be double the lot size, right? So you could do it with double the lot size. So now you're proposing with no with the with the lot size that you have. And almost at a twenty four hundred square feet is a modest average size home, building another home. Like, I just. We're taking a lot out and I think we do need to put a restriction on it. Otherwise, it's not going to go in the direction that we wanted to.
So I think we're all in agreement on on having a cap on square feet. Laura has proposed taking out two bedrooms. My only concern, and I'm sorry I jumped in. Is maybe what Sarah Melish is saying, we should have the cap be fifteen hundred square feet. But I think we're all in agreement that we want these to be relatively modest size. And I I don't think I'm not hearing anybody say we should have them be whatever, besides Sarah, who has to live with us. Live with us if it passes. So I am hearing you, Sarah. I think we're all in agreement on this. So I.
Yeah.
My initial question wasn't that. Like, Sarah, so if someone wanted to build someone, are they restricted by this now? Is there something else that they could build it under? So if they wanted to build a twenty four hundred pool house, it would have, it could do that, right? Like. So I mean, there has to be another mechanism for someone to go under another layer of scrutiny not to meet the ADU. That's my point.
Yeah, I don't think there is. That's the point.
Sue Brown, you have a comment?
Yeah, and this is not, this is not, I'm not beating the dead horse. I was just going to say B should read and or it should say and after district. And B should be provided that they provided the ADU, you know, into provided the ADU and provided the ADU. You got it.
But where I was trying to go full circle is maybe that if you did want to do bigger, you had to have the original double the square lot, just double the square feet of the property. But for now, I think this is where we need to start. Sorry, that's. I'm done.
All right, I'll take, I'll take Sarah and then Sue, is your hand still up? Or is it down? I'll take Sarah and then we'll make a motion on this.
So my understanding is with these limitations, ZBA cannot go beyond them. So we cannot approve anything beyond twelve hundred square feet and two bedrooms. And you know, I, I just think we need more flexibility. That's my opinion. It may be fine in the village, but maybe not in district E.
Oh, we took out the two bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm taking that out.
Yeah. But I would increase the twelve hundred square feet. I mean, we're seeing the seniors, you know, people want their living space. They want to give up their big houses and move in with their kids. And that's what we're seeing. Thank you.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion and add what the language says, provided the ADU does not exceed, and I will say fifteen hundred square feet. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I think it's amendment is what it is.
Amendment to the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take.
Fifteen hundred, I think it's too large. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Tenny.
If we're gonna increase the cap, I thought, I think we ought to limit it to certain districts. Cause I, I do think this is out of scale with some of the closer in districts. So I'd keep it twelve hundred everywhere else, but if we want a separate cap perhaps in larger lot areas. I just, I think this is.
I know there are some districts where. So.
So we, we just need to keep in mind, this is by special permit, so it never, just because you say it cannot exceed fifteen hundred feet, you could still, if it was in a district that was very small square, you could say, sorry, it's too big. So again, I'm just. I think we need to be careful about being overly prescriptive.
Understood, thank you.
So a motion's been made and seconded for, as written on your screen, any further discussion? Ms. Delicio.
This overly prescriptive is, this is three times what you could normally build on an average sized home. So I think we're increasing, we're changing, it's, it's too big, in my opinion. Fifteen hundred square foot is another ranch house on lots of areas here, so this is, this is too big. Out of context, I will not vote for this amendment.
Further discussion, I'll take, if not, I'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Delicio.
No.
Ms. Foley.
Uh, fifteen hundred square feet's too large in some districts, no.
Mr. Only.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny.
No.
And Chair votes yes. So we have it as three to three, the motion fails.
Could I reintroduce the amendment as twelve hundred square feet?
I think that was the amended mo, that was the original motion.
No, it was fifteen hundred.
Oh, that was amendment to the, so.
What do we just vote on fifteen hundred or twelve hundred? I'm looking at.
I just switched it back. Okay.
Getting.
So Christina's making a motion to change the, does not exceed twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct, Christina?
Yes.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, so this is to add provision B as written, provided the EDU does not exceed twelve hundred square feet.
Correct.
If we, if we vote no, then provision B does not exist.
Correct.
Okay, for twelve hundred square feet, there's no further discussion, Ms. Creighton?
Um, no.
Ms. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Only.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Ms. Tenny.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Okay.
Five to uh. I'm sorry. Five to one.
Okay.
Okay, so I am going to propose that, I mean, Sarah, do you have anything that may go smoothly? Because I it's the hour is late, we've been at it since six-thirty. I, I don't know if you guys wanna meet tomorrow or that we can have enough stuff for Monday.
So um, I think I don't have any other issues that I wrote down for accessory dwelling units, which is why I was hoping we would get through this. One, um, so the process um is, I think to look at the, um, the articles, which I think is gonna take everybody a few days. Um. The question is, are there any other big things, not necessarily that we have to take up tonight, but that we heard um, that are important to address? And I don't have any significant.
There, there was something mentioned about an occupancy number on ADUs. No more than two people or something like that, or limiting occupancy?
Occupancy lim, limiting the number of people that could occupy an ADU.
Yeah.
Size limit, we kinda did that.
I think the building, the building code is.
Okay.
So I, I, I think that my notes don't say that we got a significant um, other comments that we should that, I mean, significant, we have probably, everybody has some comments, but um, I would suggest that we do our best to um, everybody get the, I can make the uh, quote unquote, final articles available in hard copy and electronic copy and everybody go through them. Um. And then we'd be ready to vote them on Monday and it's gonna, you know, I guess the, the danger there is if there's anything, well, any large issues that will take a lot of time, but.
Was there anything, uh, uh, Mary, you have your hand up?
I um, I thought one of the issues with the residential conservation cluster was making sure that um the affordable units, you know, it had to be a wash that we weren't tipping the scale on not getting enough affordable units and that, and that, some of that language need to be revisited. Needed to be revisited.
And that's one thing, I would think that's gonna be a big deal, but that's a good point.
I make a suggestion that if you have a, that you make a specific proposal, once you see the final article, which shouldn't, it's there on the website, but that, that we come to the meeting on the twenty-third with specific motions that we wanna see amendments, so that it's, that we're not scrolling through these things.
Yeah, and I might not be able to be at the twenty-third, so I'll, I'll um, I can send an email or something.
You get that into the, yeah, get that into the sharepoint.
My, my suggestion was on that. Could we ask Mr. Bobrowski for language on that? Does he, do you have any?
I'm happy to look at your suggestions and to merge them into something.
I think, I don't think you were here, but the idea is with the density bonuses to make sure that we're not go, we're not going backwards with our affordable units. How can we come out even?
Hmm. You're not going backwards with your affordable units in, in what?
I think it's.
The open space?
No, she's talking about the SHI.
So, well, have, so the SHI can be kept treading water at about ten or twelve percent, ten percent? You're not gonna lose, you're not gonna gain anything, you're not gonna lose anything.
Exactly. So the example was if we had ten units, we needed one affordable and then um, we could have one affordable, one extra unit, so we're kinda still at a wash. Then you could have extra density bonuses for a field or open space. My point is if you keep adding, now we're behind. So how do we make this formula so we, so we're not behind?
I don't think, I don't think on the open space um, residential cluster provision, it's gonna add up to more than a few units ever, so.
But we're still then behind.
Yeah, you're, you know, the safest thing to do is to make it fifteen percent, but you lose takers every time you up the ante.
But to Laura's point, then, the, if you have um, enough land to put in five houses, you can put in five houses with none of them affordable. With a residential conservation cluster, you can get some reduced cost, uh, maybe sense of community, whatever, by making them clustered and one of them would have to be affordable, so. It is, we are ahead on the um, affordable units because we're encouraging this cluster on a lot, on a collection of lots that um, would otherwise be um built out.
For a single family.
Yeah, I mean, I think that summer street, that summer street lot that they um, that's the perfect place where, where they wanted to divide three lots, they know the frontage, um, or what they would wet frontage. If they had proposed a residential conservation cluster there, they could have three houses, put in an extra affordable one, then maybe we could have four houses. Um, have a density bonus of four, you know, and they have a lot of space.
And conserve open space.
And conserve open space. So that's an, an example of where they could have been more clever and increased affordable units in town.
I think that works with the number under ten, but once you get above ten, we're behind.
Well, we're not gonna get too many above ten, cause there aren't big enough parcels to do it.
So that's an issue that we still, um, if you have proposals for the, I think at this point, we're looking to say certainly make proposals that we can, as amendments to the, the proposed articles. To answer your question, Ron, about the late hour.
Uh, Laura.
Uh, going back to curb cuts, I can't do it right now in order to, any of us wanna sit here any longer, but I could look at our the section where curb cuts appears, where we currently say we kinda discourage the use and propose stronger language there. Um, and sent it by email. I, I cannot attend the planning board meeting next Monday, so that was my one thing that I thought we need to circle back on.
Okay.
So, uh, wait a minute now, um, so you can't make it, Mary, you said you can't make it, that gets us to five.
Yeah, we may have a quorum problem.
Let's hold on tomorrow night before we cancel tomorrow night.
Right, uh, well, I mean, we gotta make that decision now, uh, tomorrow night, I, I and I, I assume we all have time tomorrow night, if we go forward with our meeting tomorrow night. Do we have an agenda?
The agenda was to continue the public hearing, discuss and vote the articles. So we do have an agenda, it's posted. Um, and uh.
Is it at six-thirty, it's at six-thirty tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should try to get the, get these articles.
I would like to do that if we're gonna lose two members tomorrow on Monday and uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I will email everybody.
Why don't we do that?
I will email everybody tonight, the directory where these articles are, cause I don't think we have, I, I will post this version of the ADU that we amended tonight. And then we can um, uh, I'll be getting a paper copy, anybody else, I mean, no, Mary wants a paper copy.
Just please, Laura.
Do we, do we think it's just these three things tomorrow night, or do we think there's a lot more digging?
There is a bunch, there's a bunch of little ones, there's um, there's some of Sarah Milish asked that we.
Oh, yeah, some of the durations, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we can take some of them, maybe we limit ourselves to an hour and a half or two hours and try to just some of them done and not, and then that will leave us for, um.
Yes.
If some of them are sort of clarifications, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna, you're not gonna have much time before we meet, but if I don't know if it's possible just to bring those and we quickly look at them and sign off.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need to debate all this stuff.
Okay.
The ones that, yeah, the ones that we feel are, you know, we have some controversy over, I'd like to smooth, let's smooth them out and get consensus like we did tonight.
So, could we get a heads up on what those articles are? Cause I, I don't know that everybody will have time tomorrow to read all the articles before the meeting.
I definitely won't.
So who wants to bring up? We talked about curb cuts, um.
I'll bring that one. I don't, I don't know what the number is right now.
It's in the general bylaws.
It's in section six.
Oh, general bylaws.
General, okay.
Anything else?
I'm gonna take off, I've had a long day.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
I'm driving to the Berkshires tomorrow, so if you wanna reach me, I'll be in the car all afternoon.
Okay, and you're gonna send us back comments on, on the other sections?
I, I've been looking at them and I pretty much done. I think I have to look at one through four and six.
Okay.
I'll have those done before I leave tomorrow.
So any, um, let me ask you, are there any?
No, there's not a lot of edits at all.
Okay, so they're administrative things. Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Let's go back to what we wanna talk about tomorrow. It's, it's the curb cuts a, and what else?
I think we wanna talk about all of the articles, the thirteen articles. Well, well, it's a pretty, you know, they're pretty uh.
Well, Mary asked her what, you know, what we can, what she can review and that's a bigger.
I think I would s- suggest that we focus on residential conservation cluster, senior housing and non-conforming uses, cause those are the ones that have um.
Yeah.
Substantive
changes.
Eight, I think. Does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah, I didn't hear any comments about the senior housing, but we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah. Okay.
So is tomorrow night posted as a public hearing or a planning board meeting?
Public hearing's closed, so we're done with that. So it would be the continuation of the public hearing discussion by the planning board, I guess. I think we can go under that.
Posted as a continuation of the public hearing and discussion and vote by the planning board on the articles for town meeting.
I don't see anything wrong with that. Sharon or Sue, any comments? Process ones?
I don't think so. I, I guess, and I mean, if you wanted to, you could open and close a public hearing if you felt procedurally that was needed, but since it's already closed, I think we're
No, we've closed it.
Yeah, I think it's just a continuation of whatever was happening tonight, so I think procedurally you're good.
I think the public made their input. We got a lot of good input and uh yeah, we, there was no more, there weren't any more comments, so. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn and see you at six-thirty tomorrow, three days in a row.
Actually, are we adjourning or are we just? Do we adjourning?
Uh, we're not, we've closed the public hearing, so we're not continuing a public hearing.
And congratulations to Mary, Laura and Ron on their reelection.
Oh, my gosh.
Really, the votes are in?
The votes in? All right, here we go.
That was great opposition.
We're in good company.
Move to adjourning. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.